Yeah, nine o'clock. I got nine.
Nine o'clock, call meeting in order, please. Gentlemen, rise, please remove your hat, stand as able. Thank you.
We'll call for me.
Trustee Happy?
Here.
Trustee Ossling?
Here.
Treasurer Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Hill?
Here.
Our explorers is here.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for getting up and attending with us this morning. We are at the first slot for comments on any agenda items. Although I will remind everybody that this is a a discussion meeting, if you will, there, so we can take those at the time they come, if you like, and then you'll have your still have your partying comments later that would be available, so. But I can take them ahead of time, if you want, on any item listed on the agenda today. Step up, please.
Paul Bertrand from Lion Township. Good morning to you all.
Morning.
I've seen enough snow already.
Ready for more.
I have time to come in and make a comment about on the agenda for GLUA. And then, believe it or not, I got another job I gotta go do. For the past two weeks, I've been doing my due diligence and trying to figure out if the GLUA money grant could be repurposed for other things other than a sewer. I got new information yesterday from FDA on, or the EPA, I'm sorry. And it's pretty telling, so I wanted to go over it real quick. Just the highlights, I know that Supervisor Hill and Trustee Ossling probably already have this and will do an appropriate reveal of it to the public. The bottom line is, I asked for specific details on if the project money could be allocated for other purposes. And as I said, for two weeks, I hear a lot of different versions of this. This is the answer from Tracy or Andrew Tracy, who is the EPA Coordinator. Because the grants been awarded already, there are two ways to amend the activities. I asked him about amending and changing. As far as amending, a change request could be done, which would recover or cover minor things. I have a follow-up question for him about that. But the main issue here was that number two was that if the changes are more major for that, that per the Appropriations Act, GLUA would need to put together a new grant application for the new project, which is understandable, and none of this would necessarily be a walk in the park. The big one, though, is that the third way to change is by a technical correction. This includes the fact that the recipients of the appropriation can change the appropriation language, example being instead of sewer system project, GLUA could request the funding go towards a drinking water project or a stormwater management project or a number of other options. I have been looking for this clarification for two weeks and finally got it. So taking that into consideration. The reference to the drinking and stormwater was because I specifically asked him about that. And the number of other options cleared up a lot. That would then be the final determination on the repurposing to have this money serve the lake community. The GLUA step sewer proposal is dead. The Lion septic's inspections showed that there's no health crisis. All of that is in the newspaper today from Lion Township. At my age and this current position, I gotta, I must think more about the future and the generations for the lake and apply a little temperance to how I do things in the wake of, in my opinion, GLUA dividing this lake community with a concept that only a sewer project would be a solution, and that's the only reason they went after the money. If you combine the EPA and the obvious nutrient reductions that can be made. I'm gonna, I'll give you a rough outline. I was asked by Jim and other people, you know, what's the plan? What's the plan if we don't do that? There is no plan in writing yet. I can't give it to you. I'm not gonna say something that won't happen. So I'll give you a rough outline. The GLUA could rewrite the grant and its money purposes. In order to do that, there can, the only way that you can, what is termed as vault that money and put it aside is to not spend any of it. The second any of that money is allocated, any of the allocated money is dispersed. You can no longer change any of this for the main purposes. If you look at a return away from, there's not going to be a sewer, a septic or a step system sewer. And you start addressing the road runoffs, the ditching, the road end improvements. Things that I've already looked at and that we're all aware of. I did talk to the Road Commission, they would help with that. Fertilizer setbacks and testing that can be done to see if the base level of the percentage, not the percentage, the base level in the nutrients. They can determine if fertilizer is there, can't determine the percentage, but you can do baseline testing to see if that goes up or down. Green belts, the importance of the green belts, every green thing growing down there is sucking up nutrients and putting them to use rather than getting in the water. Point of sale time of transfer ordinance, which Lion Township is gonna move towards. Central Michigan District Health Department is on board with this. They sent me the word documents so that I could alter the one they have for oh, the name escapes me, right? The township, Isabella Township, Isabella Township. So the Central Michigan District Health Department is all on board on doing that, and our legal firm is looking into the loopholes of a point of sale time of transfer, one of them being that if you go from family member to family member, you can sometimes evade that. Additional septic testing is where we'll go. The intent would be somewhere in the four to five year range that eighty-five to ninety percent of all of the obvious nutrient sources and the septic inspections in Lion Township would probably be done. Eagle claims for the fact that you need to have at least six years of consecutive same testing, not sporadic snapshots here and there, and call it consecutive. All the data would eventually then go to the Central Michigan District Health Department for their record keeping. They currently, I talked to Steve King, and they got hacked along with several other counties. They're in the process of redoing everything to make sure that it is safer. But their intent then is to make all of that public knowledge. Already had discussions with Higgins Lake Land Conservancy about they would like access to that information in conjunction with us doing an ask for within two years, the lakefront property. People have septic inspections, there are three versions of it. We would hope to catch up with the rest of the township in a four to five year span. It could all be put into that database and could be managed, in my opinion, by the bigger lake organizations who already have worked together in a great manner to put in other projects around the lake. Higgins Lake Property Owners Association, Higgins Lake Foundation, Higgins Lake Land Conservies are already used to working together on things like this. I don't see a need for an overblown or an autocratic new committee to do this. This is stuff that you could do with project bids, stay local, use the Road Commission to help us get more information where we would need to get it, and go outside only if needed. It is interesting to note that as a township supervisor, and I'm filling board positions, there's only one position available that cannot come from within the township, at least in Lion, and that's one of the Planning Commission seats. So we are, you know, given the trust to do the right things. And I just do not see the purpose in trying to explore a massive committee and try and draw people in from all over the state to do these simple things. Potentially with a sewer, maybe. But that, we're done. We're done with that. Lion is done with it anyway. So I believe that, you know, America was created by people who said yes, and then figured out how to do it. I think that's where we're at right now. I would encourage everybody that let's take a step back and seriously consider again, the main point, if we spend any money, if GLUA, any GLUA money is spent, the ability to completely turn that project over to something else for other purposes that benefit the whole lake community. We're not talking about how much would Garrish get, or how much would Lion get. If there's a need on the lake, that's where we need to start addressing it, in my opinion. So I hope we can find a way to get there.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for listening, and now I gotta go do my other job.
You may speak anytime.
Yeah, if you have questions, go ahead.
I just wanted to, wondered if you'd clarify just a couple of things for me.
I will try to.
When you're talking about no need for a committee, is that a Lion Committee, or are you talking about what we're doing and the, because specifically, we've talked about this, the Steering Committee for Higgins Lake, is that what you're referring to?
No, I believe that, and this is where I go out where I, you know, I'm gonna say something that I would like to see happen. I think GLUA can handle this.
Does, what do you think, what's your idea of the the future of GLUA? What do you think GLUA should do? You've talked about a lot of different things here, a whole lot of different ideas that are sort of, you know.
I could give you an answer as of, as of today. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just what do you think GLUA should do?
I think we should not pass an RFQ. Do not spend any money trying to move forward with any purposes of a sewer that the concept of one is so far down the road. I'll be dead. I don't know what else is gonna happen in four, well, I'll answer if you let me. The the concept of GLUA to me is to turn it into an organization that serves the lake community with the using of this money for all of the other obvious nutrient sources we have. I will state again, the septic inspections in Lion Township, out of over six hundred, only a dozen were fails. There, the whole system was set up to prove a need for a sewer and approve the opposite. That's a done deal. So we can chase septic inspections, we can chase well water testing, green belts, all the things I stated, and maybe more. This is, again, a rough draft. The details, I'm not worried about the details now. I'm worried about whether we can even get to a point where the community starts to heal itself from being ripped apart. I see GLUA, you know, three weeks ago, I wouldn't have said this, but I see GLUA as being the potential instrument to make that happen now. I don't know if I answered everything you were asking, but.
I think there's a lot of questions still left in there, but.
There certainly are.
One real more specific detail, if you were to do, say, a green belt, and there is some money associated with that, would you then invoice the EPA for that work? How would you get paid for?
Good question. The reply from Andrew basically stated that GLUA would rewrite the purpose of the grant, submit it to him. He would then take it to Bergman and Peters, Senator Peters and Bergman. They would then take it to the Appropriations Committee. My understanding of this, and again, that's just my understanding, they are way more interested in furthering a grant along with a changed purpose than they are pulling that money back and dealing with the ramifications that they would look bad in that they allocated the money in the first place for something that went belly up.
All I got. Okay, thank you. I just, some clarification, because I've heard different things. The sewer inspections you're talking about, you said there was like eleven or twelve that failed.
Septic inspections, yeah.
Well, I, I think I read somewhere that there was twenty-four percent, twenty-six percent of them, something like that, that was, had recommendations for improvements, but fell outside of, because the fails had to fall under, I think, the state requirements that, which are maybe not as stringent as they should be for somebody along the lake. I'm just wondering, is that true? Was there twenty-some percent of them that had, had recommendations for improvements?
The original estimate from Steve King from Central Michigan District Health Department, which went along with the initial GLUA proposals. Well, he, his estimate was, or their department's estimate, was sixty percent or more septic systems on the lake would show some kind of a problem or a fail. The actual data after it came in, it turned out to be seventy percent of them didn't. I had that data, that data was sent to me. The issue here is that you have to understand, and we talked about this at our meeting, Lion Township's not gonna get involved in demanding that everybody come up to current code. All of those inspections and the potential problem areas were about saying, this system is functioning, but the current code says that you could add another baffle. You could do a better setup on the riser. Different things that could be done to bring it to current code. I've talked with Steve King and everybody there, they're not gonna come and tell any township, you have to do that. If you think about it, that's crazy. Are you gonna try and tell everybody in a township that all of the, you know, if we, we're gonna come by, we're gonna knock on your door, we're gonna set you up on a schedule to inspect your electrical, and if it's not up to current code, you gotta fix it. That's crazy. So when you back off of the concept of EPA standards, any, any testing result that shows a nitrate level at all is a danger to your health, and all systems need to be brought up to current code, we're not doing that. There's no need to do that. I'm not sure if I answered everything you asked. Fire away if I missed something. It's still early in the morning, and I didn't drink a lot of coffee yet.
Yeah, I'm good. I guess just trying to read in if I'm getting the notion that and maybe you just said it a minute ago, that Lion Township, on one hand, you don't think GLUA's doing what they're supposed to be doing, but on the other hand, you'd like to use GLUA to do something along this grant that may or may not be approved, may not be certainly not the way it's written, probably can't be, it's gonna have to be rewritten to do that, and who's gonna do that? How long's it gonna be? I mean, I'm just wondering where Lion really stands with regard to their support for GLUA and the relationship that GLUA and Garrish, or Lion and Garrish was.
Okay, I will try to help here. First of all, I speak for me. You know, I cannot say that I speak for everybody. I've had this problem. You may have encountered it too. When you start talking about we in the concept of the township, you automatically put yourself in a position where you're speaking for other people on the board. There's a, there's a line there. I would like to see GLUA operate within that function. I'm gonna, I'll tell you right now that three weeks ago, this would have never crossed my mind. In my age, you have to look back, a quote is attributed to Benjamin Franklin, that actually really didn't come from him. That, you know, you make your decisions based on the facts and the things that come to you at that particular time. When the facts change, you change your position, and he was implying, you know, what, sir, do you? Do you stay with the same mindset forever when things are swirling around you and changing? Yes, that is what I'm saying right now. I believe that GLUA could be, the grant could be repurposed for the common good of the whole lake, and that GLUA could remain as an organization that continues to search for more money for the good of the whole lake. And it's starting with the obvious nutrient source that we can address in a fairly, in a fairly simple manner. Where it ends up, four or five years down the road, I don't know. Our testing schedule will be set up to have decent data that we can add to the Clean Lakes Monitoring Program from Eagle in four to five years. Nothing that's contradictory to it, complimentary. Again, I'm trying to set it for the future. Yes, I am surprised that those words come out of my mouth at this point, and a lot of other people around me are too.
More guys? No, I'm good. All right, thank you, Paul.
All right, thanks a lot. You all have a great day.
I do appreciate a couple of weeks worth of getting together and talking. So, thank you.
Yeah, I had a follow-up with him when I make this today.
Yes, it does. Is there any other public comment before we, the first person on the agenda actually is Tammy, sorry Brad.
Did we?
They, we, we have to add to the agenda beforehand.
Yeah.
Yes. Planning Commission report for me, I don't think is on there unless it's under something else. Nope, we can, we'll add that as number, actually, number thirteen is a budget amendments document from the Treasurer's Office. And number fourteen will wind up being your planning. Okay. As we move forward. All right, Tammy.
So if that's okay, I'll stand sideways and talk really loud.
No, no offense.
That's okay. Well, this is my better side too, you know. Oh, Box, tonight's District Wrestling, so I have to, my name's Tammy Tyler, and I work for Great Start, which is the entity of, or ISB. So I work at early childhood, we work with the little kids from birth up to age twelve. The focus of our mission of Great Start is to make sure our kids are full, healthy, well, our parents are supportive, and families can find helpful sources as well as educational opportunities that they did. So we've had an amazing relationship with these people here at Garrish. They have helped us host two car seat events in this room. We've sent out forty some car seat packs. We have a couple in the vans down at the fire department. And we also put in your cute little, little library out here. We supported a family with an infant loss. And I'm Randy Johnson, and Mom, and I'm gonna make care of that little library, and those beautiful acorn and teaching signs. So today I come to you with another mission, because we don't have enough, right? We had a fifteen-year-old foster boy drowned last summer over in Miley, one of the ponds. It gives me chills because there was no life preserver, there was no life ring, there were no life jackets, nothing there to save him. And no strong swimmer that could win the game. So we said, wow, we're missing a piece of educating our parents as well as supporting them. So we came upon the CTO grant, which you lake owners may know about CTO, it's a voters, National Wildlife Boarders Day. We found out they had a really amazing grant to fund these life jacket stations. So I spoke at Rethlyn, Brian, and Michelle, and she spoke with the rest, and we submitted a CTO grant. We will hear sometime in March, the CTO grant for one of the, be put at the Marina in Garrish, Garrish Marina. We're super excited. Another question you'll probably ask is why is it so important? Does anybody know what secondary drowning is? I'm sure the EMS people in that. You guys know, most families have no idea what secondary drowning is. It's an incident of drowning related to the initial of almost drowning. Where kids can have pulmonary embolisms, they can actually drown with the fluids in their lung, pass away. One to two percent of unintentional death in kids, one to four is from secondary drowning. And we can throw life jackets out there for families to borrow, and use, and take them on their boat, from the swim areas. We can prevent some of those one to two percent infant family out of the loss, these secondary drowning. One of the other components that we're working on right now is working with our school districts to do more water safety. We're gonna be creating a really fun, learn our active math on our website where they can find learner stations. We are working with Mr. Stapan in Gray Lake, Lacy Stapan, on putting some there at the river access points so families that come, the visitors can utilize them. We do have funding to fund one for sure in Garrish Township. So we're super excited. We can't wait to see it actually happen and see families use it. We met with a coordinator over in Osco County, her name's Michelle Harcelow. And she had a family lose their drowning, and she, like, put that in her heart to put life jacket stations all over Osco. So our questions to her were, how do you fund it? How do you sustain it? How do you make sure you get your life jacket back, right? That's the biggest question. I was like, that was my first question, is do they steal life jackets? Believe it or not, out of seventy-five life jackets in two years, she'd lost one. So our intention is, we found a supplier that can make these fabric super skinny stickers, and they can print them, and you put those inside your life jacket. So we would talk with the township offices here, we would talk with the police, we would talk with all of the agencies around, so that if a life jacket is accidentally not left at the boat launch, it can be dropped off at a particular location. The other question, how do you know they're being used? That is another one. I'm a data tracker. Because I get money because I can tell them how impactful their money is, right? Everybody wants to know your dollar meant something to somebody, right? It had an impact on your community. So when we put the life jackets up on the station, if you look at the picture, they have them come a certain way and buckle. When we buckle those up, they're gonna be buckled and hung a certain way. So we're gonna know that they were at least taken off and often be tried on. And obviously, it's not a hundred percent data. But we will have a QR code there that families will be able to scan with their phone, just like you scanning QR codes and trying to get that dollar off. And they can report that they used a life jacket and how impactful it was for the safety of their family. Any concerns, any suggestions that they have for Great Start. And obviously, this is like a drop in the bucket to what this will potentially be in three or four years with some intentional work. But if we start with one or two, you imagine the impact, like, our EMS guys, maybe you're not gonna get a call for the South Dakota State Park. Maybe you're not gonna get a call for Charles Park, where there was a near drowning, it's a major problem. And I'm not saying that's the only reason. We know that about eighty percent of the people who use our lake are not low, right? You guys know that, lakefront owners, you guys know that. So how many times, now, we took a rental car to Tulsa home with a couple wrestlers and gave these back. I've never driven a car since I've had kids. We had no roof. So I don't believe that life jackets are gonna be a priority when you're packing to go up north for a weekend and staying in the lake. With that said, how many kids swim without their swimming, without their little life jacket? How many times do they come up to Grand Rapids, and oh my gosh, the kids outgrew the life jackets, they're in the boat from last season. Wouldn't it be convenient if those families knew where there was a life jacket owner station in Garrish Township? Be able to stop by, grab a couple life jackets, use them for the weekend and then return them. So we will be reaching out to Spies in both cities as well as Pioneer Hills Marina. I had a couple deals a year ago with our car dealers, and every car they sold, they gave me a piece of diapers to give white families that needed them. So I really think that maybe they could toss it in at fifty bucks on the cost of the boat, cost me a life jacket. As well as, we'll put up an Amazon wishlist, so if you as a community member wanted to purchase a life jacket to give to us, we will put it in as a sponsorship, and there'll be a little label that it was sponsored by, let's say it was sponsored by the Ossling Family or your business. You can be recognized that way, too. So this is really a multifaceted thing. Now, the other cool thing is, we're gonna have a life jacket fitting signed names, so if they don't have a fit of life jackets, you know, the importance of the warning strap on life jackets for kids of certain ages. If you look in the back, I did put one of the life jacket fitting and all the top styles of life jackets. If anybody's interested in wanting to see this proposal, I'd be more than happy to print one, drop them off, and you can grab them, or I can leave them. But the thoughts on this are families right now are financially struggling. So if the baby outgrew their puddle jumper last summer, are they gonna be able to afford that personal flotation device in December? Are they gonna stop them in that little life jacket that they have? I know it's like far-fetched, and when we presented it to Sean Peach with the ISB, he's like, Great Start? Like, they're supposed to talk about literacy, and I'm like, hello! What better place? There's gonna be signs for the parents to read, they're gonna learn and memorize with their child. And then we're talking, is teaching stuff all over too, so if ever a parent's been talking and teaching out back on a sign, where we engage families with, we're insane hard work. Does anybody have questions?
Right here.
Mr. Janowski, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Okay, this is, I'm not gonna say it's not a good idea, because it is. The State Park South has one of those, and people don't, they don't, you don't necessarily have to buy them. I go there, and there's new ones every time I go to that.
Awesome.
It's great, you know, and I agree, but sometimes. It's great, you know, and I agree, but sometimes, you know, if you get there, you don't have the right size, it loses on your boat. Uh, if you're going to put that at Garrish Marina, yeah, very few people use that Marina as a public. They're using all the state ones. And the one off of, uh, on the other, on the west side of the lake. So, you know, you need one there as well. I mean, but like I said, the Garrish launch, that's really for residents who have a boat. You, you don't have the parking there really to, you know, I mean, you see what happens at the state park. You can't get in on a weekend. So no, kudos, great idea, but include donations just on your boat. You have, you know, you, you could be pulled over on the lake and they're going to check how many life jackets compared to people.
So that, that's awesome. Our concern is that we make sure we're safely checking those life jackets. You know, the bubbles up there, there's nothing thrown in that they are, even the shade that they haven't expired, that they have sun damage. So I, we're, we're wholeheartedly on that. If you have a life jacket, leave it. But we don't want to put it on the rack until we have an opportunity to either have one of our workers in the yard inspect them, or myself or one of our coworkers will inspect them.
I agree.
And the reason we went with the Marina, A, is because the Cito Grant, it had to be a Marina or a boat launch to receive the funding. And with our amazing relationship with Garrish Township, because I do live here, uh, we felt like it was a start point. Like I said, what's this going to look like in three to four years with some intentional work? I'm that intentional worker. I will work to get one there. I promise you. Um, I promise you today that we will get one there, as well as a couple of the private, um, they run boat areas and swimming areas. Because it's important to be offered all the way around the lake, not just that's here and there.
Tammy? Yeah, we also talked about it, the Garrish Park, uh, but it doesn't have a boat brand, right?
Already has funded.
And all they do.
It's already got funding for Carlos. The grant that we're waiting on is the one for the Marina. But we had to have your.
Oh, you have that already, okay. I'm with you now, okay. Yes.
Recalled materials.
Okay, so my, from the, from the, on the board perspective and for the public, this is a zero-match grant. It's an outright grant. No outlay of Garrish Township capital. Perfect.
At the end of the season, Boss Sullivan, one of our amazing storage unit owners, gave us such a good deal on storage unit, uh, he wanted his little heart. Uh, so we have the place to store all of the life jackets, all of the materials that are going to go out there. Uh, we will have some portable life jacket stations for some of the smaller locations, and those kind of look like a poultry. They're really cool. Um, we'll put those away for the winter, and obviously, the second guys break stuff, we'll move them out if my kids start petting one in April.
Very good. Which, um, you have some of all of these, like one, two, and three, is that at the plant?
So, there's nothing worse than losing a dad that can't swim, right? Obviously, our focus is those zero to twelve-year-olds and, and our disabled adults, but we will have all the way through adults.
Very good.
In each station, we're hoping to put twenty-five life jackets. We will offer, but I think we will. Can I say one more thing super fast? Because I love you guys. Uh, my boys are wrestlers, and they decided this weekend to take a weekend off because they don't get on ice adventure as an athlete. They are taking a polar plunge for Special Olympics this weekend, about to see them do. Uh, so we're excited. First time we've ever done anything like this, this big. If anybody's interested in doing it, I'm looking at it right there. Our goal is to make two hundred and fifty dollars. If you're still compelled, then throw a dollar at them. Um, they're going to wear their wrestling stimulus representing the sport of wrestling, because we do have Special Olympians that wrestle.
Cool. Very good. If you'll put that right over on that table, would be good. Very good.
Excited.
Tammy, thank you. Uh, and as always, when people come to speak, I, I give you the opportunity to jettison. If you would like, you won't hurt our feelings. You want to stay? Okay, we're going to be here a while.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy. I appreciate you looking out. Uh, number two, Brad. Now you can. Good to see you're not sick.
A little pluggy, but much better. But probably on the, you know, it's, uh, it would have been, or notice, you know, every month. Yeah, and then I forgot to make the offer, it's worrying as well. Nice. That's what I ran all over.
Brian, could I have to be pointing next to you?
No.
This being Zoom, because we had some requests, uh, asking.
Thank you, Brad.
I don't see anybody.
That just means no one's there. There's no one there, and it's being YouTubeed afterwards. At strong request of the public, so we're trying to do our best to, to listen and afford. Brad?
All right, so I'm Brad Dalstrom from the Road Commission. Um, I think I've met pretty much everybody at some point. I don't know if you've talked to Jim a whole lot, but I know you've been familiar.
Well, I used to come and visit you once.
Yeah, right, so.
Your co-parker back there is hiding in the back.
Yep, yep. Roger's here as well. You know, we have some questions for him, so. Nice to meet you on behalf of working with Garrish here and.
Yep.
So, yep. So anyways, this year's road plan, it looks slightly different than what we had before. Um, we, for right now, last year's would have had in twenty twenty-five Kelly and Sly. And also had Wes Birch in there, you know, for overlays. Um, based on, I'll say an increased need on these roads here in the plan, um, we felt it was best to put them on the wayside for right now, because, um, we kind of did some estimating and checking the dollars, and it was much more dollar efficient to actually do a reconstruction on the subdivision. So Black Bear Highland, Bear Cub, um, Marywood and Mink, you know, it's all, is everybody familiar with where the subdivision is?
Mm-hmm.
It's off, um, one oh four.
Intimately.
Kind of southwest of Higgins there.
Sure. Brad, I'm looking at, do whatever, Doc.
Yeah, so the first, sorry.
One shows February third as a print, and one shows February fifth as a print.
Yep.
And so.
So the one we're looking at first is going to be your February third, the Preservation Structural Improvement Plan.
Okay, very good. I just want to get on the.
Used to be called heavy maintenance or. Yeah, okay.
Right. Preservation Structural Improvement Plan. I'm with you. You're proposing four, uh, four roads, if you will, there in that section.
Yep, and there's, I mean, it depends on how many roads you want to call it. This is just the way that we broke down the projects to that best meet a winding subdivision, so. Um, otherwise, it's kind of a mess in there. Um, these roads are very, very bad. Um, you know, like you said, we run dollars on trying to patch them up and.
Will you, will you be filling the, uh, the tree stump sink sinking when this happens, or are we just?
No, this is just.
Same hump.
Yeah, so this is going to be crushing the existing base and then paving new over the top, not addressing that. Um, the issue with, if we were to address it, then, I mean, you're talking probably ten thousand plus per hole, and those roads are, those roads are all holes, like, it's like a roller coaster.
If I correct the knowledge that I was given some time ago, is, is that those holes exist because they dug holes and they threw the stumps down in there when the subdivision was made?
Yes, that's.
And then over the course of time, it just does that.
Yep, everything deteriorates and keeps settling, settling. You know, you hope someday it might slow down. It's not as big an issue, but. You know, I, they're bad enough that if the paver were to go over them, it would be a variable, very comparable cost in asphalt to a crushing shape. So it's much more viable to actually just do the crushing shape, adds to the base material and.
So what happens? What do they look like in another five years if, if those stumps aren't taken care of?
Well, it, they'll slowly come back someday, you know, even with this big fix, but you're starting out by adding to the base, you know, by doing a crushing shape. Because what the crushing shape does is we're grinding up the old asphalt, actually adds to that base and then puts a little bit, that little bit more of a bridge over the top. You know, so they're, this isn't going to totally make it go away by any means, but it's going to make a good, you know, stronger bridge for longer, I guess, uh. I mean, you're, you'd have to basically ha- have this fix with this dollars. So we're looking three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the whole subdivision, plus the cost of digging down the whole road base and digging all that up and then replacing it all with probably clean sand. So I mean, you'd be, it would be a huge cost.
I, I get it, but.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get through my head. It's in five years, ten years.
Mm-hmm.
We're back here. Thirty-five went away, and you're in the back in the same spot you were and never did get fixed, you know. I think your recommendation is that this is the best way for the long haul.
Yeah. Well, I mean, so this.
Exceeds the road allocation in village.
Yes.
To the point that it could cost the township sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
Yeah, so I was.
Stay on that plan.
I was going to get there, but there, there's options, so, um, we can go back. Um, like, say if you guys didn't have the sixty-six thousand or wanted to spend it, um, we have an option, we can do an advanced construct where we take, you know, the next year's future allocation dollars, and then bring that back and cover that cost with that.
But which are behind sixty-six thousand?
Right, then it.
Forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
Yeah, which is the downside to that, but, yes, because then that, that affects the future plan.
You're borrowing money from tomorrow to today's recommended debt.
Right. You know, so.
Kick in the can.
So any questions about projects where we're at?
So then over onto the twenty-five, twenty-nine preventative maintenance plan.
Yes.
These are what you're proposing for twenty twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. So the, yeah, so the.
Which are some country curb removal and culvert clean out and some dura patches.
Yep, so what we did there was we took some, just to help out with the overall cost of projects, we took the kind of work classified as preventive maintenance and added in, and added that into the preventive maintenance plan to help out, you know, took about, looks like about seven thousand, seventy-five hundred of the hit out of the projects. You know, and that eighteen thousand, the PM dollars, we give you with no match, you know, so that's basically for like crack seal, dura patch, um, culvert clean out, um, whatever preventive maintenance work we feel needs the most attention at that time, so.
Good.
Uh, no. Somehow you guys actually ended up on the sheet, it says a minus like nine dollars or something. I don't even, I haven't checked into where that came from. That's just how it showed up, so. We don't need to carry an allocation carry forward request this year. So, um.
West is new money for, you push this out, borrow from next year to stay on the plan. When does the actual county road mileage expire?
Uh, it's coming.
Be mid, mid-plan. It sure isn't twenty-nine.
Right, no, it's definitely mid-plan, and this is assuming that we would renew it as is, you know, like, we don't have that accounted for yet. Um, I think it's another year after this year, I believe. I believe it went to twenty-seven.
You. So if we.
Is that right? Okay, yeah.
So really, as you look forward, I'm, I'm not, just in my quick mathematician head, is if you, if you went the route of borrowing into next year's, uh, monies, if you will, there.
Mm-hmm.
That, that sixty-six thousand becomes a couple of years out, actually, that you're getting into, really.
Right, you know, yep. And initially, I mean, you'd have to pick or choose a couple roads or a road.
Well, but we've been through this before, Brad.
Yes.
We don't get to pick and choose those roads. You guys do. That's what I was told last year.
Well, I mean.
Go back, if we told you to go back to the drawing board,
Mm-hmm.
you then pick those roads. We don't get to pick those roads that, that this money would be allocated towards for twenty-five.
I mean, it's your guys' plan as well. We're just telling you from the engineering side of things, you know, where we think you should go.
I just want to make sure that they know what I learned last year in this process. This is still the road soft recommending.
Oh, yeah, but we look at pace, so we rate all the roads, give them a pace or rating, and then that's what's identified in that current rating column on there, and gives them basically a number from a one to a ten, where one's basically a blown-out terrible road, and a ten's a brand-new construction. And typical overlays and, you know, the best that'll do for roads, make it into a nine again.
Yep.
So.
So they're obviously grabbing those, those are solid twos, uh, there.
Yeah, and if it wasn't for some wedging and prior fixes that were done, then would probably easily be a one.
And everything else on the maintenance that they're proposing are either twos or threes, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's where we're at. So does this mean then in a, in order, if you look at it to balance here, there's a lot of, there's money being spent, a lot of money being spent on these roads that really need it this year. Next year, it doesn't look like they, like those roads are in too bad a shape. Can you take a few of those out of there or wait another year on those?
Yeah.
Down without.
For sure.
Without messing with the.
I mean, so, yeah, so loc, or, you know, your local, average local road, I would say, you know, prob, like, there's no real, we haven't really done much data to figure out like that deterioration rate. But I would say it's probably anywhere from maybe three, four, maybe even five years it takes for a road to drop one number in the rating, depending on where it's at in its life. You know, when it's a new road, it kind of, it tails off, goes a little slower, and then the curve starts to steepen, it deteriorates faster, the worse it gets.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's arguable that you have a, a road that's a nine, let's use.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a nine.
Yep, looking at the PM plan.
Yeah.
Around maintenance.
Rating that, you know, look, the crack seal that's proposed
Mm-hmm.
isn't in that equation, correct, of the five-year degradation?
Right, yeah, and then that's just one of the milestones along the life cycle of a road. So if you were to go and look at the breakdown of the cost of, to maintain, say, a mile of paved road, you know, that would be one of the milestones there is to do a crack seal after you pave it a few years down the road to seal it back up, keep the water out.
Anticipating this aggregate cost, like you were last year, being much higher.
Also, that was with the chip, that was the chip seal cost with the stone, and we were kind of blindsided by that one. Um, obviously, going forward, we'll probably up our estimates from what we had, but who knows? You could turn around and two, or next year, we go to do chip seals again, that price could come back down, you know, who knows? But it's where the market was at the time, and there's a supply and demand, uh, or high supply, or high, low supply, high demand for that stone, you know, that only comes from a certain byproduct when they're making gravel, and there's only so much of it out there, so.
Once again, another topic that, uh, I've had to learn more about than I ever wanted to.
For sure.
Learning. What's the magic of the eighteen thousand, a hundred and two dollars each year that you're spending?
Yeah, so that's basically comes from my, out of our budget, our maintenance budget, we have, I believe it's about a hundred thousand. Let's see, I think it's a hundred thousand, maybe two hundred, but whatever, it's a hundred, say a hundred thousand. Then that's broken down by a population and mileage, and then gives each township, you know, share.
Annual allocation, that's what we get every year.
Yeah, for preventive maintenance, and that's no match, that's no strings attached.
And you back the work that's got to be done into that amount of money.
Yeah.
For that year.
Yeah, so if we, so I should have backed up. I apologize, I didn't go over the funding here, so if you look at your Preservation Structural Improvement Plan, so at, at the very top there, there's a twenty-twenty-five allocation, a one. At, at the very top there, there's a, the twenty-twenty-five allocation, a one fourteen, nine forty-four. So where that comes from, that comes from, um, our road commission MTF funds. And we're taking one point one million and basically giving that to the townships. Now that has stipulations on it. Right now for a few years, we're on to a eighty-five fifteen percent match, so. Eighty-five percent of the allocation dollars has to have a fifteen percent match of township funds. Currently at this time, while, while the countywide millage is in place, we made it so the, the. Countywide millage can cover that allocation match. So, you know, that allows, you know, township basically to have a cost of zero dollars, cause that match is covered. By there, but if we hit the, the thing is, if we're getting close. To, you know, renewal of the countywide millage and say it went to the wayside. Then boom, we're back where the township's required to actually make that match. So I think we're kind of at that point where it would be a good idea to start budgeting and prepare for that, so that money's there. Need be someday. You know, and it, it doesn't hurt, you know, the, we've talked about. Um, the costs to maintain a good road system averages per township. Of, if you were to take about a, a full mill for a township. So if you were to look at that millage number that a one seventy, one hundred and seventy-two thousand. Um, what's coming in, that's Garrish's portion of the half of existing road mill right now. And if you were to double that, you know, you're looking at three forty-two. So that's pretty darn close to where that township or the total is for this year. But if you take the money that you have now, the one fourteen plus the one seventy-one. I mean, there's, looks like you're about fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars short a year to maintain a good system.
Stay on the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And a lot of that has to do with.
Yeah.
Vote a millage in at a particular time, an actual Advalora mill, millage and.
Right.
You don't get the a- assessment advances or assessing advan- advances in, um, in your, uh. Your costs. So you're literally doing it and then if costs go up over the, which they historically always do.
Yeah.
You wind up where you're at, which is where we are at. We were, last year was like forty grand and now we're.
Sixty.
Well, you know, and I, I hear what he's saying about, and I think the board needs to hear what he's saying about the reason. Discussion, all the more reason for us to do our reserve funding, uh, discussion from fund balances directly, so.
Yeah, all things aside, I mean, like that hundred and fifteen thousand dollar allocation. If you were to take that twenty percent match of that, you're. One fifteen, hundred and fifteen thousand divided by five, you'd. Be about, Garrish's match would be twenty-three thousand. So that would, you know, twenty-three, twenty-five thousand would be the bare minimum if the. Countywide millage went away, that Garrish would be responsible for, yeah. Just so you know what that number would be. Yep. I, who knows? I mean, it's, uh, it goes out for a vote and before I believe it passed by one vote, so.
Land for the worst and hope for the best.
Yeah, so hopefully, you know, people have seen results and understand, you know, it's a good.
So Brad, uh, again, I've got new board members here. What is your ask and what are the timelines?
Timeline, so right now this is all preliminary. We have not sent out our HMA hot mix asphalt bid. Um, when we get that back, that's when I'll come back to you guys with more solid numbers.
Okay.
Right now is to let you know where we're at, what we're looking at. Um, I kind of roughly estimated we're running ninety bucks a ton predicting. And if say that were to come in five bucks less a ton, it would take that cost about fifteen thousand dollars less. So closer to fifty, so, um. Really just, you know, it all comes down to the bit, you know, I was just looking hypothetically, what could happen, you know, and. So that cost could go down a little bit hopefully, but probably won't go away from the bid, so.
Where Joe? Questions?
Okay.
Michelle?
Indeed.
You said timing, one, one was, what are you gonna be back with?
So timing a bid, well, probably that'll be March sometime, so we won't be looking at. An agreement probably until April's work session meeting. So, just for a timeline, so we got time to think about it and time, you know, whatever, yeah, so.
Find some money.
So the. This two thousand twenty-four estimated cost is for the two thousand twenty-five road plan, which would be this, this season.
Yeah, yup, upcoming season.
Like our worst case scenario would be the sixty-six thousand or something really went awry.
Right.
Last year, I think you gave a, a number and it ended up being less, which was good.
Yeah.
It did.
So, this project is pretty much all outsourced?
Yeah, all bid out, I mean, pretty, we've bid out pretty much all of our paving minus a little bit of local work here and there, but our big jobs. You know, we get a better price per ton by giving it out to a contractor than we would by us doing it. And plus we'd have to have basically a full-time paving crew for half the summer to keep up with it.
Don't, don't do their own.
Yeah, which we have a paver, but it's only eight foot wide paver, so some of the stuff's pushing it and. Probably wouldn't, you know, you'd be taking on a lot of risk by trying to do as much tonnage as all our paving is with the. Smaller paver, you know, be, be, you know, pushing it to the limits. And having the, you know, instead of having the manpower and do it, that's a whole nother thing, so.
I had a hand up back there. Go ahead. We either handle it now or we handle it at the end, so.
Hey, so you're putting a Band-Aid on a major problem with the sinkhole. I'm totally against reckoning, need that fall under the carry. Why can't we, I mean, I don't know who built that sub vision, but the developers can't be responsible for that? And.
They passed away.
In that sub vision, that should contribute to that as well.
And so we're talk, we're talking a development that's probably fifty, sixty, seventy years old.
Oh, yeah, dollars a dollar and you're responsible for it and that company is still in existence. Why do you wanna walk the link on it? You wanna keep putting Band-Aid on Band-Aid and like the gentleman asks, it's gonna come back. And I know it's, cause I have experience. Uh, redone it, ground it, did it, and every crack came back within two years. I'm telling you. Each one of them came back exactly the same, okay? Two years ago, you had, uh, budgeted to do rolling oak way. You came out and measured it, you priced it, it still painted it. You never did it, yet you did fairway. You know, completely redid that whole sum. Whatever happened to rolling oak?
Rolling Oak's in the plan for twenty-six right now, so.
I don't have that list.
Just how I was talking about, all the projects come up in dollars and strips.
But I don't, I don't think you should be putting a Band-Aid when rolling oak has been on the list. And it's not a major, we don't have any sinkholes. Some of the yards in that sub vision do, but they did exactly that.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, we're doing a full blown reconstruct, so it's not a Band-Aid and it will help blow it down.
I know about.
But, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, twenty-five mile an hour subdivisions. And the huge cost of taking out the old rotten stumps.
I get it.
I mean, it's a balancing act. I mean, either you spend five hundred thousand dollars now. Or you, it just shortens, it just slightly shortens that life cycle of the road over time.
Our whole budget for Band-Aid, that's my only point.
First of all, the picture is not a Band-Aid.
No.
So you're gonna tell me them holes are not gonna return?
I'm not gonna tell you.
Okay.
We have holes.
Say no more.
But all material vacuuming, contact is on the whole.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I just, very good.
Um, one more thing with the road commission. On rolling oak. After you come off a major, and, and they're building also more homes in rolling oak, so that subdivision is growing. Okay, right now, when I leave rolling oak and make a left-hand turn, you cannot see any cars doing fifty-five miles an hour. Flying over that hill. There's no warning signs that there's a side street there, nothing. Okay, so when I'm in my car. I feel a little safer. I got, you know, I got a new tag bumper. When I leave on my Harley, I am scared as a lot. I'm not kidding, but they come up on me so fast, I don't even know if they seen. They fly fifty-five over that hill and trust me, how many accidents happen at the corner right here at the intersection? A lot. But you're gonna have a death on rolling oak before you know it, right in on the napkin.
We can check into it.
Well, low speed limit. I mean, that would be really good, cause quit making that a bypass. Let them go up to M eighteen and get to Holden Lane. Don't come, you know, a lot of towns in Colorado, they, they have signs that say no engine brakes. I, I live right here. I can't even hold a conversation in my yard, doesn't have semi-engine brake. You know the sound, okay? I don't like that either. At fifty-five miles an hour, they're hitting seventy, they take their foot off the gas and nothing but engine brakes.
Right, let's try and bring this thing back. We've got a huge agenda today too. I wanna, I wanna be as, 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 uh, good as possible with all the comments. But we do have a large agenda today as well. I've got, Mr. Janowski, I'm sure you can contact the road commission there about that individual site distance piece.
Yeah.
It sounds like it might be in order to contact him about it on, on the concern. Um, and, uh, so I'm, I'm not trying to be rude or crude, but we need to move on. I got some people actually on payroll. I'd like you back to work. Uh, so, next one up, Jason. Thank you, Brad.
Yep.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing from you again and we'll, uh, we'll take everything into consideration as best we can. Morning, Jason.
Morning, everybody. Uh, January twenty twenty-five building zoning report. Uh, we had, uh, we issued eight building permits, seven electrical permits, three mechanical permits. Uh, one new long-term rental registration and inspection. One land use permit, and we have two zoning board of appeal scheduled for early March. Uh, total receipts were three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Very good. Question, board?
Increase or what do you think it is compared to, you know, year on year?
As far as zoning board of appeals?
Well, just the overall activity, is it, is it busier?
It was slower this year, considerably slower. I think the permits were down maybe twenty-five, thirty compared to last year.
But financially, you're pretty close to.
Yeah, I think.
By the time you get to March, you're gonna be pretty close to what you budgeted.
Yeah, I think the, the, like, last year, the. It seemed as busy, the permits were down somewhat, but it was smaller things. The, the projects weren't as grand as the past four years. It was smaller additions, uh, smaller garages, remodels, that kind of thing, more of that than. Uh, twenty to twenty-four was pretty crazy.
Yeah, they, or they'll have an annual, uh, number summary as well for the, uh, for the board annually.
Okay.
Um, and, uh. So you'd be able to obviously see and, you know, it seems spot on. I just looked at it February eleventh or up to February eleventh and, uh. Is, is, uh, you're about, you're about spot on. Looks like it's a little bit down.
Yeah.
But I agree with Jim and looking at numbers over, I think it probably will.
I, I anticipated it being much lower and it really wasn't, so.
And who can predict the future?
That's right.
Any board members have any questions of Jason? Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your time this morning. I apologize. I couldn't get you back quicker. All right, we're on to number four. The, uh, uh, the chief for the police department is at, uh, the, the chief's conference. Uh, and he has forwarded, obviously like he always does. So, um, I, today, and I told him, uh, you guys can all read this, but there are some items that he has highlighted in red. Those items are going to need, uh, some board participation with some formalities. For a motion on Tuesday, which is, uh. We need the, uh, hiring authorization from the board for Rodney Most. Uh, that was made already, but he wants to do a ceremonial, uh, swear-in on, at our Tuesday night meeting, so. Um, that is a request for agenda, not a motion. The one, the next one, number nine, it says, uh, he did receive a letter of resignation from Officer Alexander Cole. Uh, his last day of work was January thirty-first and he's accepted a deputy position in Oscoda County. So we've lost a, an officer through recruitment or retention, uh, to Oscoda County. Um, so there is a letter of resignation from Alex that needs to be formally accepted. And that's what does have to have a motion. And that is his recommendation. To accept the resignation. Obviously, we wish, um, Alex, uh, the best. That being said, you move to number eleven, board on your board report. And you will see that with that resignation then comes, we, uh, we need to, uh, give him our approval. To begin looking for replacement to fill that vacant full-time police officer's position that's been. Budgeted for or otherwise, so we would look for a, a motion on Tuesday night for, to authorize. Um, Chief Maschinsky. To, uh, fill, to replace, um. Slash fill the vacant police officer position. As recommended, I'm kind of roughly writing it right now, so bear with me, folks. Uh, I think, did I get those? Yes. So that, I believe, is what he is asking for motion pieces. Obviously, he puts together a real nice, um. Uh, he puts together a real nice report as does the fire chief, um, so you guys can breeze that over, okay? Any questions from the board? Not hearing any, let's move on to number five, Jim. Fire EMS, uh, highlights and updates here. Morning.
Morning. Now, uh, I'll hit the highlights you've got in front of you, but, uh, going over the incidents for, uh, January. We started off the, the new year pretty quickly. Um, January first at seven in the morning, we responded to two pickup trucks that were on fire in somebody's driveway. And it was threatening a barn and a car. Excuse me, the car, um, both pickup trucks were lost, but the car, so, um, had some melting on it from the radiant heat from the other trucks, but. Were able to save that in the barn, so that's how the year started for us. And then, uh, a couple of weeks later, we ended up with another, with a structure fire that, um. Was, was on a Tuesday evening and it ended up being minus six degrees out during that fire and minus twenty-one with wind chill. Um, we ended up, um, losing the structure. I was the first one there. When I got there, the fire was through the roof already. Um, and it was, uh, lightweight construction. I don't know if you're familiar with, with, um, modern construction, it's lightweight construction, the. The floor, the floor joists are not solid wood, they're not one by twelve or two by twelves or two by tens, they're. They're, um, engineered, engineered wood. So it's basically particle board between two pieces of wood and that's what your floor joists are. And that, that becomes weak very fast when it's under stress with fire and water load and those kinds of things. So we, we were trying to catch the fire in the attic and also in the basement, cause it was both above and below the first floor and in the walls. And, um, the, uh, floor became weak and the firefighters were inside. You know, told us that the floor was becoming spongy, so we pulled them out and it wasn't long before that floor caved in. Into the, for the second floor caved into the first floor. So that was a very difficult and frustrating fire. Uh, we were out there for seven hours in uh, those kinds of conditions. We had. Uh, response from our neighboring departments. We had, I think, five different fire departments there helping us bringing water. We went through about twenty-five thousand gallons of water that, that night on that fire. We ended up having to. Excuse me, um, take the building down to get to to the fire. The fire was through the entire building um, by the time. Um, we could do anything with it, so we ended up having to tear the, tear the building down, unfortunately. But um, so that's, that's kind of how our, our January went. Um. And you can see the numbers of calls there. Uh, the training is there as well, so on the back page. Um, community involvement, we've been pretty active this last uh, this last month and through the school year with um CPR training. Especially for the uh, health class, for the ninth graders and tenth graders, and then for the um core. Uh, career tech program, the med tech students, we've been doing CPR for those as well. Uh, we've done car seat, as Tammy mentioned, we have a car seat technician. Um, and Josh did a uh, car seat inspection and installation for a newborn um, this last month as well. Um, usual meetings through the month, and then department activities. Uh, as you know, the, the firefighter one and two class for new firefighters. Has been going on here since November. It'll be continuing to go on now until May. In May, we'll be having the uh state testing. I think there's about twenty students in that uh, that firefighter one and two class, and one of those students is ours. Um, and that's Josh R. Murray, so he'll be, he'll become a firefighter, certified firefighter in May for us. Now, he's a nice young guy, and glad to have him. He works out well. He can haul lots of hoes, so I think we'll be good there. Um, we received donations from um, our firefighter that passed back in October at a farming accident, um Wes Eldred. His family has um raised some funds and donated some money to the fire department, along with the victim services unit that supported them. Um, they raised over two thousand dollars and donated it to the apartment, and they wanted us to buy a piece of equipment that would be. Useful for what we do, so we purchased um struts, rescue struts. And rescue struts are used for stabilizing a vehicle that, that's either on its side or on its roof. And we have to extricate people out of that vehicle, so it keeps the vehicle from moving while we're doing that work. So we purchased two struts with that money, and they're now on, on our rescue truck. Um, and we're gonna put the tag on there. Recognizing Wes, um, in memory of Wes for uh, and his family. Um, we're continuing to work on the ISO rating. Uh, Assistant Chief Rogers has been working on that. Uh, we attended a phone meeting and started working with the retrogression specialist uh, to draft a plan. To try to keep our ISO, ISO rating at six. Um, we had to have a plan to her prior to uh, January twenty-first, and Brandon, um Assistant Chief Rogers did that. The plan was accepted. Um, the, the specialist feels it's gonna be difficult for us to, to stay at the six rating. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna give it the best shot. We're gonna go through that plan with them, and it's, it's gonna take several months, probably six to eight months to go through that. It's gonna involve things like working with our neighboring departments to make sure what we have for mutual aid agreements and have automatic responses instead of. Call when needed, things like that. Um, one of the things that hurt us um, um, the most was the amount of firefighters that show up at the call. We're, we're, because we have two people on duty twenty-four hours a day, we can get out the door pretty quick. But we don't have the same number of people responding that we used to have ten, fifteen years ago. It's the whole recruitment and retention thing that's being um, seen throughout the nation and the state. If we had more people available to respond, it would certainly help our numbers there. So several, several of us attended the recent fire investigations. Uh, last month, I talked about the. Um, structure fire on West Sunset where the power line was down, and it energized the house. And we, and it ended up catching the garage on fire in the house, and once the power got cut to the house, we were able to go in and. Put the fire out in the garage, and most of the house was, was saved, except the, the garage had some significant damage. So we attended that fire investigation with both the insurance investigator for the homeowner and. The Consumers Energy Insurance Investigator, Claims Investigator. Um, it appears that, we could see that house was energized, because it was arcing to the ground, both at the garage door and at several other places around the house. And uh, it looks like they found it, um, where the garage door sensors are at the bottom. One of them had um arced and, and closed off, which sent the energy up to the, the outlet at the garage door opener, which ended up arcing there. And that's where they feel the fire started, but we don't have the report yet to, to say that, but that's what it, that's what it appears to be there. If um, if the reports come back and it appears that there's some um negligence on Consumers Energy's end, we will, we will seek. Um, reimbursement for our costs there from consumers. Um, we also met with the insurance investigators out at the fire Maplehurst that I was just talking about a few minutes ago. Um, it's very preliminary. You know, when I got there, it was obvious that the fire came through around the chimney area. Not sure if it was a chimney fire or a fireplace box fire, um, something in there at areas where the fire started, so. Once we get the report back from them, we'll know more about that as well. Any questions on those so far? Okay. Um, interviews were held on January twenty-eighth for uh, a new fire EMS chief. Uh, the interview panel consisted of. Um, Treasurer Anderson as the chair. He sees the liaison between the board and the fire department. Uh, Trustee Ossling was on that board, uh, Chief Muszinski from the police department. County Commissioner Kim Morley, who's also a business owner in the community here, was on that, and we brought in a fire, a fire chief. From an area up in Montmorency County that's, you know, not from here and didn't, didn't know anybody here of the candidates, but is familiar with fire operations. So that interview uh panel interviewed two candidates, both of our assistant chiefs here. Um, it was both very qualified individuals. Um, I sat in later on the final discussion, um, and, and listened to how the interview panel went through that, and they had a very difficult time. With that decision. Um, but their recommendation from that is that Assistant Chief Christie Gilliam to fill the chief's position, and I don't know, Jim, if you want to add anything to that.
I, I can only say that both, it was a very difficult this, decisions, like you said. I do commend your department for the professional way you went about this process. And my years of being an auditor is just a lot of times, somebody just points over, says, you can be the chief, and. And uh, that did not happen here. It was done in a very uh thoughtful and professional manner. Um, I am very pleased that both of them are gonna stay with the department. That one of the big concerns we had is that. One, one got it, and the other one didn't. What would happen? They work well together. Um, I'm confident that's. We're gonna, we're gonna be able to continue on the same professional manner that you've been operating. You're just gonna have to get some more people in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to know, I was on that committee as well, and I just wanted to note that we are very blessed with some great leadership in the fire department and uh. Two great candidates for your replacement, and um, it was not easy to pick along, but uh. Thanks for all the work that you did for it, and thanks to the advocates.
Uh, I'm assuming that you would like a uh motion Tuesday. To uh, take your recommendation of Christie Gillian to fill that spot.
That's correct.
As appointed, okay?
Yep.
Very good.
So if that happens on Tuesday, um, then my last day is February twenty-eighth. That's the end of the pay period. Um, and then, I don't know when you want to swear Christie in, how that process will go from there.
Her position would start effective March first.
Yep.
Is that, we'll put that in the motion, if that is what it is. Clerk, the clerk can get together with her on a, the regular. Swear-in, if you will, then, then I don't know, you know, and did you want to do, you know, uh, before the board? Cause I know you're leaving for some vacation or something.
Yeah, I'll be gone most of March, so.
I mean, were, for her family a ceremonial?
Maybe, maybe in April.
April?
Yep.
Okay. You'll come back for that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll come back.
All right, we'll make a note for April then, um, to have that opportunity for Christie. Uh, and her family and her achievement.
Yep.
Very good.
Sounds good.
That's all I got?
That it?
Yep.
All right, any, any questions for Jim before he goes?
Okay. Any interest by the board to take a break? It's ten twenty. Um, all right, let the uh, we will, we will adjourn at uh, ten twenty and be back here in five minutes.
Got it.
I apologize. I didn't do a written report. We haven't, uh, we've been in somewhat of a pause lately. We have a one item. A couple, a couple items to, to finalize in the one million dollar grant before we can move forward, so we've got to do that. And we were just in a pause, you know, we haven't uh, had the opportunity to finalize that last bit. So we can move forward on the work plan as approved by and uh, by the EPA. Um, the other thing, when, one item that did occur was the, uh, we've been working on one grant that. Is helping to fund the um, application for the discharge permit for the treatment site, and that has been submitted. So that, that'll be on pause for a while now. It goes, it goes into Eagle, and they have, on the initial. Um, application, they have up to six months to review it and respond, so that's. Um, apparently, yeah, uh, that's a sidelight. That's not Glua's action, uh, but. The um, the uh, Lion Township recently made a motion that uh. Now therefore, let it be resolved. The Lion Township Board is not in favor of the step sewer treatment plant site as presented.
Yes, I'm in possession.
We didn't, we didn't take that action. Glua did not take that action.
Okay.
Well, we had already, you know, had it invested, so we're putting it forward. You know, right now, it appears things are a little bit in flux, and who knows what will shake out, but Eagle doesn't charge you to do their thing. And. Uh, it's, it's in their, their hands, so. I'm gonna tell our engineers to stand down and not. Do any more work on it, but it takes the eagle. It'll be sitting on some bunch of people's desks there, and then they'll be reviewing it, and like I said, they don't. Usually get back for anywhere from four to six months with comments or supplemental information needed, and hopefully by then. We will have a little more direction.
I don't want to cut into your report, but I.
That is my report.
Okay, I, I would.
We all know it's short, right?
It's short.
I, I would like some perspective.
Right.
You're, cause you're the chair.
Right.
Okay, so you heard the supervisor from Lion Township's comments today. I guess I'd like to hear, you, I'm gonna put you on the spot. I'd kind of like to hear your thoughts on.
Well, a lot of the items have been discussed, you know, in, over the last, say. Eight, ten, well, really fifty years, to be honest. Uh, you know, as far as the compliance, I know they talked about. There's not many that are not in compliance. There are quite a bit that are deficient. The other key. Critical point here is if you go back to October twenty of twenty-one, I think it was October, don't quote me. But in twenty twenty-one, uh, Steve King did indicate in a letter to this board. That even a brand-new septic tank and field. It brought up to their, the current standards was not totally effective in feeding nutrients and.
It's still gonna leach into the lake.
It's leaching into the lake, so, yeah, they, they, there's a bunch in compliance, but there were a lot not in compliance, so.
I, I guess I'm more interested in more uh, on the comments about redirecting Glua. Repurposing, because that's what I'm hearing.
You're hearing, yeah.
That's what I, yeah, you know, he's.
Well, back in whenever, two thousand twenty-two, when Glua was formed, or two thousand twenty-one. It was formed under uh, Act two thirty-three of the Michigan Acts of nineteen fifty-five. It's, that act stipulates what we could be, what, what. Uh, actions we can take and what, you know, what our directive is. This was reiterated in the Articles of Incorporation, which were drafted by and approved by both Lion Township. And Garrish Township. They basically states exactly our purpose. And our purpose is, you know, relatively limited, so we don't have the authority or the ability. Under the current bylaws and under the current act and which we were created, to do a lot of the things that maybe. And I, I don't disagree, you know, it's nice the zoning. I've. Spent in meetings. The zoning is an important part. Some of the setbacks, uh, the road ends. I've suggested to people in the audience to go to the road commission. They're the ones that take care of the road ends. I don't know, the drain commission here takes care of the drains. Those are the avenues. We, as GLUA, as it currently is, doesn't have any of that authority.
Right.
Jim, you're not getting to where.
But I'm, you know, I guess.
But, you know, we can't.
Somebody's gonna start throwing darts at me, but I'm gonna tell you. You know, I sat up last night thinking about this, and uh, I don't like not being able to sleep over somebody else's problems. But now it's my, I'm on this board, uh, I didn't come here on this board. With any preconceived ideas on the sewer. Some people may have thought differently of that. Uh, there's three of us that are new on here, and none of us had. Any agenda other than trying to do the best job we could as a board member. But that said, you know, and I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing. You know, we, we voted to. Dismantle this, the special assessment district, which I think was the right thing to do under the current environment. I, um. I'm concerned about, you know, the only thing that's just now still tying us with lying. On anything is Glua. And I suspect that the only reason that that's still there is because. Some people are perceiving that that million dollars is gonna go. You know, they're looking at the million dollars. I, I suspect that if that million dollars was on the table, that Lion Township would probably. Have it either attempted to fully dismantle Glua or withdrawn from it. And um, and I'm also concerned, because this week I understand there was a special meeting just to be able to. Appoint somebody from that township on your board to be able to make a vote. Uh, and that, I think, determine, we use it, gerrymandering, and, and I. I had attorney that is a good friend of mine that told me that, you know. Takes two people to get married, but only one to get a divorce, and I feel like. I feel like this is where we're heading, and, and uh. I think philosophically on the approach, on how, I, 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 I don't, I'm not saying that the ideas that. That the supervisor mentioned from lying today are wrong, but the approach on how to address those issues. I don't necessarily think they coincide with how this board wants to approach it, and I see, I see us. Driving towards a wall here, and I, it's, and I'm not sure where. Where this is gonna end, but. Uh. I'm not sure that the avenue of using Glua or attempting to use it the way uh, he's mentioned it. And repurposing it, or even repurposing that grant is even a, a, a likely idea that'll occur. And I'm not sure. You, you guys are looking to go into a contract that um. And, and start implementing that grant, and, and, and every step on underlying that whole process has been. There's stumbling blocks have been put out there by making a motion not to allow, uh, you know, it's obvious they don't want a sewer. Not, it's not even gonna steps, it's, no sewer. That's what I'm reading. That's what I'm hearing. It's not. I mean, some people are saying they're against the step system, but I'm hearing, I don't want a sewer from people. And um I just my opinion is I think that, you know, Garrish Township, I got elected to represent this township. I can't say what's gonna happen on the other end of the lake because that's theirs. And um I'm just wondering if we should be looking at uh eliminating Glua and starting a a new path with Garrish Township. And I I'm not saying because you're doing a bad job or anybody on Glua uh
Well, thank you.
But I'm I'm not saying that, because I really appreciate all the work you guys have done. But I just see that every step of the way, if you we try to operate at the way that is being operated, it's you're gonna be undermined every time you try to do something or and I just don't see I don't see a path forward in this app, you know, in this process. I just don't see it. Um, you're not a politician.
No, I I I'm an engineer by trade.
And really, I'm not either, but I I do understand the process a little bit. You guys are trying to operate, and you're not politicians and you're you're, I think, um politics has got involved in this so deeply that um decisions are being made based on that. Um Paul could say whatever he wants this morning, but the reality is that he can go back and there's he's in his own words said that he has mandates that he's following based on the election. That, you know, the constituents that elect him that they're gonna have a they have an agenda. The agenda was to destroy the sad. It was that's what they did. They undermined everything else. And again, I'm not saying I was for the sad or against it. I'm just saying I'd like to see processes and an avenue to get forward with taking care of this lake. And as it is right now, I just see that you're gonna be hitting stumbling blocks continuously under Glua and then not in and partly because it wasn't even designed for what because it was me last month that said, hey, I'd like to see maybe we could repurpose Glua and move forward. But I'm what I'm what the what I'm seeing is that maybe that's not, maybe that's not the way to go about this. Maybe Garrish Township needs to move forward with the health of Higgins Lake, take the information we've got. If if we could get grants under the guise of the the health of Higgins Lake and move forward. If I think that Lion has the same ultimate goals, maybe as far as taking care of the lake. Down the road, maybe we would coincide again and but I think as of today, I don't think that our processes are gonna coincide. I don't think you know, we want to take this with a rule and a square and move forward, and I don't see that from our counterparts. And that's my opinion.
Not as chairman, but just as a personal, I've, you know, I don't read the paper, but I've heard a lot of things going on in the background and some statements said by a number of the Lion Township Board that are not, say, encouraging as to uh a path forward with the glue as it's currently, you know, it just.
I think if you took the million dollars off the table, there would be no interest in in participating with Glua.
It's it's not a million dollars either. There's no way we could get any part of that money. It's something less than that, but it's some number. But there is there is some money out there that could potentially be made, and are we walking away from that and making the wrong decision? But I'm just gonna follow up on what you said. I I was awake after last night too, and I just put it on my iPad, and I'm just gonna go through that. In that I think there's gonna be some folks that'll be disappointed if we end up down the path that Jim's talking about, which I happen to agree with. But uh and for that, I am sorry because we're, you know, we're we're here to, you know, do the work of the of the community, but we ran for an office to do what's right, not to be involved with some specific special interest. You know, Glua's been here for four years and um and it's had suffered some negative press. We've embraced it frankly and incorporated some of the directions they want to go with the directions that we feel as a board. And we've we've weighed into their that are um that are the direction we think we should be. We were frankly hoping for a partnership, I was anyway, that we could, you know, go together as a lakewide partnership. And we've had an awful difficult time making that partnership come together. You know, we're pretty good with Glua, but we can't get the the rest of the parties together to to make that thing go forward. Right now, we're looking to uh find the source of the the problems that are out there at the lake with our Health Higgins Lake Initiative. Um, we've got some efforts to address some of the known smaller problems um and see if they don't make a difference. And the eventual solution, if all those things that we've talked about worked, uh we might make a dent in the way and the health and to the positive of of the of the lake. But um if a sewer system turns out to be the answer in the future, then that's exactly what we should march for. Lion has mandated that they uh stop the sewer now, any sewer. That's the way I read it. Not sometimes it comes back up. They just don't want a sewer system, but in the next breath, they get rid of a lot of the work that you've done with regard to the to the plant property and regard to obviously the sad, the sad and so but it seems to me that you don't they don't want a sewer system. And that's frankly what we're not. We're not advocating that. Now we're advocating getting to what the problem is so that we can identify if a sewer is what we need or not. We're we're I don't think we're in a position to spend the grant money right now because the items that uh that that we can spend the money on are very limited. And uh if we enter into an agreement with the EPA on this grant money, we're committed. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're committed to the the grant as it is then, and it's to administer the rest of that grant, of which we can't identify areas to spend money on. So we're gonna spend a part of it, and then it's gonna be done. It's frankly gonna be done in two years anyway. That's the
That's the timeframe.
Timeframe of it is all it's it's unless we ask for an extension, which is possibility. Um, as and I think I heard uh Supervisor Bertrand this morning say that he wants to um apply for a bunch of peripheral stuff or some peripheral stuff that's not a part of the grant. And I just don't think that's the appropriate professional way to go about um working with these people, the hardworking people at the EPA and the work that, you know, our own committees have done here. You know, there continues to be uh it appears there continues to be influence on grant administrators that don't come from directly from Glua. They come from other people that are involved, and I think that complicates um the the way that we can go, that anybody could go ahead with administering that grant. So I guess that's I guess that's said enough. Um, I I just don't.
Well, in response, you know, the the there is the million dollars. There's a lot of things that not only would be good for, you know, for for the community as a whole, you know, the in particular, the mapping and some of the other things. Uh, yes, there's uh.
Without a sewer system going forward, the engineering on a sewer system. Um, yeah, that mapping could be, but it'd be far removed from what a sewer looked like. It's the mapping, you know, it'd be good to take advantage of what's already been done, the flight and the survey and whatever.
Mapping and things, but.
But it doesn't meld with with the grant. So uh, yeah, we might be.
Well, the mapping always within the grant, and so is some of the just, you know, step taking a step back. And whether it be a step system or something else, that's but that's our task. That's our purpose to look at sewer system. But there's a lot of peripheral items that could be beneficial to like planning and zoning. And I know they were talking about locating septics in the future and all this, you know, and mapping it. So, yeah, maybe we wouldn't use all of it, but we could probably use some of it to benefit the community as a whole. But that's.
I I don't wanna see the money go.
I don't wanna see the money go away.
Same token, if we don't I just don't see your your authority to be able to operate the way it should with what you've got to work with right now, because I just think that you're, you know, like you said, there are things are on hold. There is a philosophical difference, I think, between the two boards at this point. At one point, when this started, you line and Garrish apparently had agreed as two boards to move forward. Today, it's not. They've made that very clear. And I just don't see how we can uh you know, some of the stuff we may come in agreement on and be able to work with together, but I I'm just very concerned about trying to repurpose Glua to meet uh wherever the whatever purpose that we can come to an agreement with, because right now um every time we I'm hearing something, it's 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 something that either undermines Glua, undermines the process or is totally conflicted to to what we've been talking about is how to move forward. Uh, we are almost starting going back. It's taking some steps back to go forward again, but I think we need to step back onto some solid ground, get the science behind us, get the information out there and then be able to move forward again. Does it result in a sewer someday? I would suspect it probably would, but probably not why I'm here, or I definitely not why I'm on this board. Um, but I we're we're at a we're at a we're at a crossroads. I just.
Well, I echo you. I echo your concerns. I think I've sensed the same uh dysfunctionality going forward. Unless we get lying on board to say, yes, let's go forward and let's be a look at it. This is this million dollar grant in a positive way. And and they've basically have indicated, you know, and not as a board, but as individuals, that uh unless we do certain things, they don't want to go forward.
Exactly.
And you know, Jim, if you I guess I go to the common denominator, which is your Articles of Incorporation, and they were written as a sewer at the end of those. I mean, you're
Yeah, I don't know.
That we've been out, obviously, as we've been, I've I've seen the communication. I've talked with with Paul, and this is no, I'm not getting into, you know, he's been he's been good. We've we've talked to him. We're trying to find avenues of commonality. But at the end of the day, we've been told and we've been at by actions, it's exemplified. They 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 resolve to not allow the property even where you're looking at a treatment uh plant out there. Uh, and then they have also said, and it was said, I think this morning, that, you know, sewer is not gonna be the end. Uh, you know, I mean, that that is their mission right now. And so I look at it. It was created by two constituent townships. That's the verbiage. And so you have to have willing the willing partners, if you will, for the Articles of Incorporation for the ultimate, which was the creation for a sewer. I don't see that happening. And so then you have to take a look at, you know, you you have to have a viable partner, right? And and I I just was told me, look, if 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 it doesn't resolve to do these kinds of things, that we're we they're pulling out. We're not gonna have a partner.
We can't do those things under our articles.
Right. Exactly. Hey, listen, we can argue legal stuff all you want, because in the end, yeah, absolutely. We all can. We all can and have been to attorneys to, you know, I mean, those are what I like to call defenses. And those are always uh done in court, and that's where everybody loses is in court. And so I I think you have to look at it from the common sense basis. You know, I I I like these two guys here. I Jim and I, Osling and I have been obviously embroiled in most of it. Um, and I try and keep the board. I'm not trying to slight the lady's side of the fence because I have been trying to keep everybody up to date at the board level, um because it is a it is a decision of five board members, not one. And it just, I don't know how you move forward. I just feel like we are at a major impasse here. And I think that, you know, when you start, when you start trying to, shall I say, uh I like the fancy words of repurposing and 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 whatever, but you essentially you're fiddling with the federal government and what their rules are or otherwise. Um, I I just, I I in the beginning, an old reverend always said to me in the beginning, see the end. And when I look at that, I say to myself, I mean, we're all hoping and praying. That's what this is. This is the Hail Mary that maybe you might be able to get some of that money to stay home. Um, we can't even agree right now, Jim, on the, you know, currently you've got an RFQ that went out. Uh, you've got a stalemate at board uh for the most part. Um, yep, you can push it forward with uh four votes that you may that you may possess with the current makeup of the board. But I look at you and say, I we still don't have an at-large appointment past March uh thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
We put out uh to get applications for folks for a couple Glua spots that were due. And uh and and that comes February ninth for us. But it almost seems like an exercise in futility. Uh, if we can't manage to get even an agreement going into a uh uh say agreement of of a constituent partner totally. And by the way, I I don't, I I don't, I I have the same concern as Paul Bertrand does. I we've articulated those together and Jim Osling about things we'd like to see get done. The issue always comes back to is is can we repurpose that money? Uh, you know, right now, how many meetings have you had? You haven't been able to go around the block since the since the election, really. Um, and the more time we waste is the more time that we could be spending moving forward uh with 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 partners that want to be on board and uh in and do something for our lake. As you and I have had conversations numerous times.
One other thing is that we were it would be different if we were saying, okay, we're just backing out. We would just like to back out and not want nothing to do with it, but we have another plan. We have another direction. We have another supportive group.
Right.
And a bunch of stuff on paper that's got started and uh and people that have raised their hand about want to get involved in in a different direction. And um so it's not like we're abandoning this whole notion, and um we are moving forward. I'm not saying we're doing anything with regard to what we've talked about here at this point, but we've got options. And we have good options.
Yeah, when when we talked to Paul, you know, I mean, initially coming in, there just were so many preconceived notions and um and uh, you know, listen, I I I understand where their board comes from. Uh, they just got done with a election win, and they feel like they have a mandate. And they feel like that they have already walked some of the pieces that we want to walk, which is to get data and that kind of thing. Um, and um, we're not looking to dictate to anybody. We're just looking to find the empirical stuff. And as I've talked to you, you and I, at at the very baseline, I can never argue with an engineer who tells me that ultimately a closed system is the way to keep stuff out of Higgins Lake. Yep, I can't. I listen. I can't argue that um even common sense wise. That's why when you talk about septics and you talk about those things, no matter what you do, that's still going to the vest of a system, still gonna drip down into your your table and then potentially be fluent to your lake. I I I can't, but there is a big political community difference on that argument um that that, you know, you guys are, you know, I, you know, I don't know how you hung on hung on this long, to be quite frank with you, with the batterings that you're that that's been taking over this whole issue. But as we did on the Special Assessment District, uh the reason why we did is A, we thought it was too soon rolled out. And B, man, the you know, you're never gonna get a good discussion back and refocused on the health of Higgins Lake while you have an a potential assessment like that um uh over the top of the community. And I don't know how many times we can continue to hear um and I and I respect, I want everyone's, I respect Lion Township's decision. That that is their decision to make. They have their own autonomy. But when they but if we're not going to have a partner moving forward and the unless this condition is met, meaning no sewer, but yet the very mission of Glua by Articles is sewer. So it just sounds to me like more of that, everybody's got an opinion, and it's, we're trying to gerrymann some solution. And I just, I I'm troubled by that, very troubled. I when you say awake at night, uh, you know, I I've been sitting here since April and and just watching all of this. And and literally, I'm not sure we got any further than April first, to be honest with you. Uh, so that's that's my thought process. Uh, so that's, that's my thought process on it. And I just don't, I, I don't, I don't know. You gotta have a partner to want to move forward. I'm not gonna blame it all on Lion Township by any far stretch. But at the end of the day, this is our reality.
Think we hijacked your report?
Oh, you, you're doing it? Okay, thank you. Well, he, he told me ahead of time, in fairness, he told me ahead of time, I don't have much to report and I know, other than it's an impasse.
It's, it's, it's outside influences in the house.
You know, and I just see you as your board tries to move forward in whatever manner, if you stayed with the way it is. It's like every meeting, I just see you having to make political decisions instead of scientific decisions. And, uh, as you said, you know, we got a whole room full of experts, because everybody comes up to me and tells me, oh, I know how this works. I don't. I don't, I'm a CPA, I'm not an engineer, but, but I've had, everybody has an opinion about four against sewer, four against step. And, you know, and probably even after all the science is done, you're still gonna have different opinions, but at this point, to operate the way you're trying to operate, I just don't see how we can go forward in this manner. We, I think we need to segregate the two and allow us to move forward in our own way. They've got their way, we've got ours. If we can come together with some ideas and, you know, share uh, ordinances or proposed ordinances, maybe we can do that, but the idea of us, of any sort of a sewer system as a whole around the lake right now is dead with the current administrations.
This, this isn't a happy position as far as I'm concerned. This is not a good day. This is not.
No, it's discouraging because we can't.
A lot of work done. You guys have done an incredible job. You've come up with a whole bunch of really good stuff. I mean, uh, it just doesn't seem like Jim says, like it's.
I'd like to stop, see, I don't want it to go to waste. There's a lot of stuff that this committee could take and put together, glean it, and then add to it and move forward. I think, and we have to, we're delaying a lot of what we've, we've held off because we were waiting to see what was gonna happen. I think it's time to, to start moving forward and, and with, and it'll have to be at this point, Garrish Township. Period. Phil? Yeah, he'd probably love to get off the chair. Oh, I like it. He probably would love to get out of the chair. I know. I've been in that chair many times, so I understand it.
I can't hold myself back.
No, go ahead. We.
So I, uh, have a pet peeve, if you will, and I've talked to some people about it already, but not everybody. So, uh, I'd like to suggest a small step, not a big sewer system. And the, the reason you, you got, in order to get any grant money significant, you gotta have a project. And then if you have additions to that project, they're more receptive to grant money. So my, my big issue, if you will, is, um, Treasure Island. With Treasure Island, um, you know, with, with other parts of the community, people five hundred feet from the lake say, well, I'm this far from the lake, my affluence don't get into the water. Why should you be building a sewer for me? Well, for Treasure Island, it can go in any direction. It's going into the lake, period. No doubt about it. The, the, the problem I have with Treasure Island is they've never stepped forward and gotten their septic tanks pumped. Now, septic tanks are one thing, affluence are another completely different thing. Affluence are going right into the water. The, the, the water table's there, it's going right into it, whatever direction it flows. But they've never taken the initiative to get their tanks pumped. To my knowledge, they've never attended a Glua meeting. They don't, they don't show any interest at all. So I, I called Sergeant and Scott. And, uh, Scott, for one, says they've looked into it. They're ready and willing to come out there as long as they can have more than one, it would be inefficient. But if they have two or three or four, they've got the barges lined up, they can pump their systems and everything. But again, it's not the affluence. They're not taking care of affluence. Um, I've talked to, um, Eagle and EPA and asked what's the problem? There is no problem. They don't need any permit from the state. There's islands all around the, the state of Michigan that get pumped out. They don't have to pull a permit. They don't have to notify Eagle unless there's a spill afterwards, then they have to notify. So, um, what I would like to see is a small step towards a sewer. And that, that being, uh, put, put the people on Treasure Island on sewers, give them grinder pumps, pump it over to the mainland and just have a holding tank. The holding tank could be pumped out. You don't need a wastewater treatment plant, just a holding tank like every septic system has. It'd be a bigger set, but everything from the island would be taken off. Nothing would be put into the lake. A small step, we could do that. And I, I think it falls under a sewer system with the one million dollar grant we have. I think we can redefine the buckets that we currently have and put a lot of it into designing that type of system for Treasure Island. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
And, uh, I should have said this to you again. I agree with what your thinking is. I, whatever your decision is, you put the time and you thought into it. I, I completely support it. No hard feelings at all.
Thanks, Bill. Jimmy, you got anything else?
No, I just want to thank you guys. You guys have struggled with this over the last few months or really the last living with it. Last few years. And I know you put a lot of effort in trying to do what is best for your community and lake. And I hope forward to continue, you know, a relationship with.
And to you guys as well.
And I think that, uh, hopefully we can salvage things and get it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, again, we got an agenda here. Let's hope we can get done by noon. Let's just hope. All right. Hey, listen, we're on to, uh, number seven. Uh, I want to thank everybody for their comments on all that. I think some of those are long overdue. So, uh, we're on to Parks and Recs update. Uh, before Susan had left and she, Susan C Mac, and she chairs that. You guys, I've told you that, uh, a circa document from twenty sixteen had a, says it's supposed to be, uh, you know, seven people with one supervisor and six other uh, committee members, uh, and it's to meet at night. And when I got here, there's nine people existing on it and it meets during the day. Um, so somewhere along the line, it was confusing. I want to reset the bar. I sent the youth folks. Uh, I've reworked the Garrish Township Parks and Recreation Committee and a committee for formation guideline. The biggest part that I need help on, because there really wasn't any real definition really before is, uh, we, every other board that we have has term limits on it. And then we obviously get, and in our future, we'll be opening it for thirty days. Look at the folks. Appoint who we think is probably the best fit and then they have an expiration date to it. This, this Parks and Recreation Committee does not have that. And they're a very active group of folks. I don't want to shake them either, because I think they do great things. So I need you folks' help to tell me, because I really like to get this thing moving by about April one, so that we have those in place. And I can also, we can also send out, uh, get communication, send out with, with the ones that are existing to let them know that we, you know, we're, we're revamping the process just a bit here. If you want to reapply, absolutely. Uh, here's where you go. It'll be on the internet, just like we've done with these other positions. So I, I draw your, uh, your attention to committee structure, roles and terms. I currently had it written as Garrish Township authorizes a committee makeup of seven members to be approved by the Garrish Township Board. One, one position will be an ex officio position occupied by a current sitting Garrish Township Board member. At no time, uh, will the committee be made up of more than seven members. A chairperson for the committee will be elected by the Garrish Township Parks and Recreation Committee themselves each year to occur before April one of the given year, which goes, coincides with our fiscal year pieces. The committee members serve with no expected compensation from Garrish Township. The term of the committee members is what? And then stagger, uh, what? Help me with the word. I'm old. Does it have to stay two years? I don't, it'd be whatever you want it to be. I don't care. You know, the thing about it, well, these people that are doing it, they're, 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 they're basically volunteers. And I don't want to just, I don't want to have anybody think, well, if I'm not a committee, I can't volunteer. That's, I, I think. But I, I served on the DDA, still do, but I've been reappointed since nineteen ninety or whatever I should, I don't know. But, uh, I don't, I think this is a good idea. Um, uh, I would definitely make them staggered. And the idea, I would say about having the terms, one of the things that I've come across in my years of being on committees is that may have somebody that doesn't show up for the meetings. And when their term comes up, that's probably somebody you want to say, hey, you know, why don't you volunteer? And let somebody else be, sit on the board so that there, you got a full board meeting when they actually make decisions. So you have six members outside of the ex officio for staggering. How would you like to set those up? Two years, is it one year, two years, is it two year and two years is a three? Has it set up? How would you like me to verb this?
Michelle, Michelle, what are the planning commission and the ZBA and they all, they typically?
Two and three, yeah.
Two and three. That's fine with me. It's planning commission too.
So, so, but when you initially opened this up, there will be, uh, two positions at three years? Two positions at? Two and two at one. Two years and two at one. Yep. Am I hearing that? And then they, and they would rotate out at two years. And it would be, but, but yeah, ultimately. And then after that, I could put some verbiage in, post the initial setup there, two years, intended to be two year terms in the future. Good that? Yep. Good? Yep. Good? Rocket. Oh. It doesn't have to be a lot. Oh, no, I don't want it. That, that's micromanagement operationally. No, they can determine as a committee how they meet. That's. So this is gonna be a motion for next week? I can if you want it. We need to, or I don't. Motion to approve it? I'll, I can get it together by Tuesday, uh, with the changes. Yeah. Okay, so that'll be a number five motion. I'm gonna email, I'm going to call, I'm gonna try and make as much contact as possible uh, with it. And because everybody that's on the current one, if they wish to reapply, they may do so, but we need to get a baseline. Motion to approve the GT. By the way, I have been in touch, uh, with, with Susan as well on all of this. Um, so I'm not just surreptitiously doing it. I'm consulting the, the users, if you will. I will craft the, the motion for that and I will also craft, craft the, uh, the changes to reflect what you all wanted. Okay, uh, no further comment on that, guys. Like, we'll move on to the zooming and YouTube meetings definition, what meetings to stream. All right. So back when I got here in April, um, there, there was no real definition. We had some great new, new security equipment. Uh, we had some zoning equipment and, and the like. Since then, it's kind of morphed into what I sense the community wants, which is zooming and then eventually posting to our YouTube channel, which our Redline Media has been doing. And of course, we, we also, uh, signed a contract with Redline Media at forty-five bucks an hour to be able to do what he's doing right now, plus uh, YouTube loading after the fact. Sometimes I'm told YouTube loading can be an hour or two and we're seeing some of the bills, if you will, of that effect. So the question then, because, and since then also, we now have gotten our budget together, um, and we have figured out exactly, um, what our revenues and excesses will be for the upcoming year and our actual fund balances that we, that have been evasive for a couple of years. Uh, and that being said, I, I feel a little bit more, a little bit more proactive in discussing because I, it appears like there, there would be some money to be able to do whatever it is that the board wishes to do. So I come to you today. As I have come to previous board or otherwise, I really would like to have some kind of a definition of what meetings we're going to stream and what, and YouTube on behalf of the public. Uh, being, being very, very upfront about the fact that you're not required to do any. It, it, it got birth in, birthed in the COVID time. Uh, even to the point you could vote, you can't do that anymore. Uh, if you were a board member or something from afar. There's even, uh, there's even a, a piece of paper that I found that I'm not even sure you're supposed to discuss if you were a board member over that Zoom uh, from Michigan Township. So what meetings? Because we have a myriad of meetings. We have all of our, you know, I mean, listed out, if you will. Michelle, I think you put, did you put that in? Well, yeah, there was a document. Yeah, here you go. So if you all look, uh, you know, I mean, these are the Garrish Township Board Work Sessions and Board Meetings twenty-five, twenty-six schedule. None of this includes Planning Commission meeting. Important Committee, uh, talks about future of the township. Parks and Recreation Committee. Now, I understand they have been YouTube being, or not YouTube, excuse me, zooming. Uh, they operate the equipment and have zoomed it, but certainly is not being, um, um, archived over to the YouTube. And we have zoning Board of Appeals coming up and we have a zoning board. Uh, we have a board, I mean, there's so many things and so, you know, uh, if everybody likes to throw around the words transparency, there's a cost to transparency, obvious. So the answer is, is what I need to know, I need to know what the wishes of the Township Board are regarding this and what we are going, so we can at least get the expectation out to the public of what they can expect to see. Instead of what I do get, which is criticism over the issues. I'm done with criticisms. I just want to get expectations out there. I'll throw, I'll throw the first one out. All right, throw it out. Personally, I think, uh, it's, it, a lot of people have come to expect be able to see stuff, uh, you know, online or live remotely. I think that the board meetings or work sessions and our regular meetings should be included in that. I think the planning commission should be included in that, the regular meetings. And I think zoning, if they're working on zoning itself should be, but as far as Board, is Board of Appeals, uh, all that, you know, I would say no. And any committees like Parks and Rec, if they want, I could see why they'd want to use it as a purpose to communicate. But I don't think that should be an expectation to put, put up on the YouTube. I think the only thing we should be responsible for would be, uh, planning commission, zoning, if it's zoning for planning type stuff, not, not, not appeals. And, uh, and our board, that's it. I don't think there should be any, I mean, we could have it there, but the expectation of that being put up on YouTube, no, and it's not official. It's just those other ones are. But if, all right, so our board work sessions, our regular meetings and you're, you're eliminating the occasional special meeting, which only because, only is, we gotta, we either pay something that was out of schedule or there is, in order to keep the operations going, to accept the resignation of somebody and then so someone can continue to. I, I guess I was, I was expecting if we had a right special being, that should be broadcast as well, because then if you didn't do that, there'd be potential thought that we were hiding something. I don't want to have that, but I'm, I'm, that's what I meant. It's, you know, our board meetings, I think, yeah, there's a reasonable expectation of the public that we should be able to, that they should have that, but I'm just saying committees, no, and, you know, they have minutes and they don't make decisions. They have to come to us and make a presentation, which then would be part of our meeting. So I don't think that, uh, yeah, committees don't make. I think it's an unreasonable expectation of the public to think that those should be covered and it's cost, you know, it's cost us money. Okay, and, uh, so Redline Media. Um, I know you're the, an employee of, but I'll, I, sometimes special meetings, uh, because of the what I just said, um, they, they require eighteen hours. Uh, is, is Redline Media going to be able to meet the commitment of eighteen hours to be here and do its thing? You, you would imagine so. So if I called them, because my, my goal is, is to give Redline Media the absolute earliest possible notification of whether they're specials or planning commission zonings, things like that. Um, so that they can be here. And yet it's not fair to judge them. Well, they're not here. Well, nobody told them to be here. So. Okay, I am hearing that. Jim Ossling, are you good with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that schedule, that philosophy. Yeah, um, I'm all right. I wonder, you know, we have a lot of people I wonder, you know, we have a lot of people, very. People very interested in our community that don't live here in the winter time. They want to be involved and I gotta be sure they can be involved.
Sure.
And.
You can still sit in here with your own computer and zoom somebody.
Sure.
Any one of the board members can do that, bring it in and.
Yeah.
Do it. We just shouldn't have to burden, have a burden of cost. And it has expectation that's going to be put up on YouTube. I don't think we should do that.
Mary Jo. So. Okay. Well, there's a cost.
There's a cost.
There's a cost to doing business.
I, I hear transparency all the time and when, when there's a cost, where it also has to be met with is your expectations, therefore you must pay for the cost. So that, I guess that's where I go. Number nine, uh, devise a timeline for the Health of Higgins Lake Committee appointments, uh, Jim. Um, I know that I have talked to you last month, we, we said, hey, listen, we want to. You know, kind of hold up a little bit until we could get some clear direction on the glue of pieces and whatever, uh, not to confuse anything. But you know, we did, all we did was moved another four months, four weeks back. And so I guess. Why I put it on there was, is are we at a point, Board, where we want to put out? For the five authorized uh, members to put that out there with our appointments policy and with the brief application. Yay, Nate.
It's, it's the. It's also a bunch of committee members, a bunch, there's a bunch of committees that um, you want to start getting people for, and I think that.
Yeah, but do you want to wait until we get the five and then advertise for the subs or what's the, what are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are that they both go out at the same time.
Okay.
They're all out there, we, and then from the pool that I hope we get. And comments I've got from people, it's going to start filling up that from that pool. We can do some interviews and pick the right people for the steering committee and then the right people for. Chairs of important, you know, science committee and communications and. I think they both go at once.
Okay.
And I've got them ready to go, ready to be on, I think. Well, anyway.
Well, I put all the health of Higgins Lake out there.
Yeah, there are.
What we'll have to do is, you know, list out the, uh, you know, the committees that, that, you know. Would be available for some appointments for people that might want to sit on. You know, regardless of whichever one it is on the subcommittee, but so there's actual five committee members. That are basically the coordinators of the, the uh, the, the, the sub pieces. And of course, once again, it's a committee, it makes recommendations to the township board, it doesn't make. Decisions.
But the steering committee is going to sit there with the understanding of the vision for where we want to go.
Sure.
With this direction from the board.
Yep.
And then give guidance to the, the committee members that are turning the crank on the data, the whatever the. Task may be.
Yep, and then go back to that table and report out and, and get, get a product of some nature available. You know, you know, after a lot of the work, right? That gets done, okay. Uh, Mary Jo, comment? Michelle?
It's a great idea to put it out there and start accumulating your, your prospects.
Is thirty days enough time though, being it's mid?
We don't know.
I don't, I really don't want to lock us in on that thirty days if we've got. People that are gone for the winter that might have some. I don't know, but I just, I'm throwing that out there.
Tell me what you want. Ninety days?
No, I'm, I'm thinking more sixty, but.
Sixty?
I, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there.
We get a great big pool of people in thirty days, man, I couldn't be happier, but. You're right, I know that there's people that, that are not here, that uh.
Or may, that may not, you know, considering the history here. Because, you know, once you're put out there, you're. You're, you're in a bullseye. A lot of people might be reluctant to sit on it and it may take.
Hey Bruce's fellow?
I'm just saying, I mean, you, you, the, the climate right now is. It's a shoe person, ask questions.
Let's review the, uh, what have we reviewed? I don't know if we have the other motion or anything, but uh, or if we even need a motion to put these, to kick these up. Did we take that action?
We authorize the committee, and we don't, this is operational, uh, get this out to the public. Uh, and, and we're not making decisions because we're not, we'll be making decisions on approving whatever. The, the group, the interview show up or whatever.
So maybe some minimum thirty days, give us some room to, you know, if we need to.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd, I'd like to have the ability to go longer if we need to.
Okay, so we're going to do it, the words will be minimum, Jim, but maybe if you could come in and we'll, okay, we'll craft that together and I'll get it out onto the website piece. Everybody else good with that? All right, very good. So we're now on to number ten and number ten is the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget ways resolutions, final comments by the board. So we obviously worked through the budget uh, piece, um, I'm happy that. We uh, came out the way we have come out, we stripped everything down to bare bones. Uh, and, and went forward in the processes. The only thing that I personally have that um, I thought about from the last meeting. Um, and the, and when we got this together was. Listen, we, we're dedicating ourselves to the health of Higgins Lake and I think that we need to look in within our budget. I don't think we have to get the fund balance to get there. Uh, I would like to look at um, putting a line item in our budget for the health of Higgins Lake. To show our commitment as well that we're continuing forward um, in, 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 in our endeavor to seek some answers. Um, and I, in the future, I think that we could move that if we need to do to some type of a reserve uh, fund. Uh, moving forward, if we start gaining uh, access to grants and other things, we could be able to. To basically pigeonhole that money. Uh, but for now, I'd like to suggest that we. We uh, we move from our contingency projection, probably the easiest place, twenty thousand dollars, maybe in that line. I'm open to suggestions if we wanted a little more uh, or less. Uh, just throwing it out, getting reaction.
It's a good start. Um, if, if we uh, start going this direction and we apply for grants, you're going to need probably a match.
Yep.
Um, if we. Um. If we did get grant, my suggestion would be rather than this be a line item in the general fund, we create a special revenue fund.
Yep.
Specific for that, the money that goes in there would all be accounted for in independently from the rest of the township fund. So you'd be able to see it. Uh, that is not the same as this authority, that is just a fund of the township. Which we would operate under someday, if you, you know, obviously after I'm gone out of here, but if there was. Another process to go forward with some sort of. Project, you may want to create an authority if it was going to be funded. Or you'd have, actually, you'd probably have to create an authority if it was going to be funded through a special assessment or some special village or whatever. Uh, but that's, that's, that's long down the road, this is, right now, it's just. Get the planning started and, and the process.
Well, and I, I usually, you know, the, the committee, you know, it's good, you don't do anything for nothing in today's world. I said, I think you, I think you got to start uh, somewhere, right? And after doing the, the hard work on the budget that we did this year. Uh, I think we've got a really good handle on this budget and I just think now might be the time to do that.
Well, I can, I can pencil it in, redo this, have it prepared for.
Well, we, we have to approve the proposed Tuesday night.
Right.
So that it sits for thirty days for the public uh, viewing, if you will, there. Um, before the annual meeting, which is where we approve the budget. Uh, and then the taxpayers get to determine the salaries of the township board.
You can incorporate all these budget amendments.
Yeah, that, we have to do budgets.
Done, and then another, the last one would be to add, Jim, to add another line item for.
All right, well. Those are budget.
Well, we have some budget amendments for the current years that, that need to be dealt with. Which is light.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Those are different. This is, this is for the budget you'd be uh, looking to pass. And you know, just commentary, um. When we worked on this, you started with the bare bones. You have a shell worked on it, then you and I worked on it.
Yes.
And I put in the revenue side and I made some assumptions. Which I incorporated into this, which was the four percent increase for uh, across the board on wages. The uh, couple of things to consider is that. There was fifty-five thousand dollars budgeted for new software, which we don't need now. And there was also probably eighteen thousand dollars you were paying to have outside consulting done. To have your records, which you're not paying for now, so there was about a seventy. Seventy-three thousand.
I totally laugh because it hurts.
Yeah, so that's partly why that this worked out the way it did.
Okay, so uh, we'll be having an, uh, an action on the motion. To approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six proposed budget. Jim, you'll do the, the.
I'll rerun this and rerun and have it to Michelle.
Yep, for our packets uh, on that. And uh, any other comments, Board, on, on those pieces? Yeah, she, she went, yeah. I know we're getting a little long for you, but. Uh, all right, I'm sorry, I could. At the very end, you have public comment again, yes, sir. So um, the next one up is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six poverty exemption. Um, this is a regular resolution, I believe.
Yep.
Uh, that we need to uh, address uh, to, uh, so we need a motion to approve. The twenty, this is a formality that comes out each year, twenty-five, twenty-six poverty exemption. Exemption. Income guidelines. Lines and asset test. Okay, uh, and then uh, number twelve is a seasonal employee discussion and.
In, in your packet, there's the list of the uh, work session and the board meeting dates when they're. Um, I just wanted to note that um, in November. I ended up, uh.
It was veteran, veteran's day.
Veteran's Day falls on Tuesday, the eleventh.
So you moved it.
Meeting to twelve.
Okay.
Wanted to make sure everyone's okay with.
There would be a Wednesday then.
Yes, it's a Wednesday, I will put that underneath the.
Is the township normally closed on Veterans Day?
Yes, uh, so do we need, are you asking for some kind of motion to approve this or just, okay?
Be sure you guys see that.
Okay.
The normal, same thing come January of twenty-six. I think the work session date fell on January second, which would be the first day back, so I moved it up on the.
The date, and we ran into that, I think, this year too, right? Okay, perfect, um, very good. Thank you. Um, seasonal employee discussion, uh, this is necessary, obviously, off of this Earn Sick Time Act. Piece, if you will. Um, again, when I got here, we weren't using any, any, anything to say to the employee or seasonal. Uh, you, you're, you're, you're start X, you're employed from X date to Y date. Uh, there, I, I did, uh, I did go out, did some research, uh, came up with the initial letter. Uh, but majority of this falls on the bookkeeping, um. You know, the, the, much has been made of this, the clerk and the treasurer, I know, have gone to a, the class on it, uh, about. How to apply it, uh, yes, there's, uh, there's some state uh, bills, I think, that has some activity. One passed the House, but it's now in the Senate. I haven't heard any, anything since I went to the Senate, other than crickets. Uh, and so we have to be prepared February twenty-first uh, for that Estee Law to be able to account for that. That time, we're governmental and.
You're talking about the pay time off?
Yes, but Esther, yes.
But even if it doesn't get overturned.
Right.
Under the current rule, those employees are exempt from that anyways.
No. They accrue one.
The seasonal?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I thought if they, if they were six months out.
But we're, that would be. Six months in between. And they, so when they leave at the end of season, when they come back. They, they don't be where they had.
All right, oh, yeah, so we're still throwing it, but we don't, right. Yeah.
But we need to tell them that you're employed from April first until, I was October or something first.
Okay.
And, 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 and then of course, be prepared on that piece. In that seasonal employee discussion, and it keeps coming up. Um, and it, it, and I've heard it previously at a couple of other board meetings, previous to my tenure here. But I was in the audience as a police chief and, and I hate to scratch the itch, but it's just a constant itch. There apparently is tipping that goes on down at the marina, on the dock. Um, in our employee manual, uh, it clearly says that gratuities are not accepted. Um, no other place does it get accepted, uh, anywhere. It's kind of weird because although we're government, our employees are government. Um, it's, that's a for-profit business technically, um, under that, but it still falls, employees fall under us. And so we need to address that issue. And I'm just bringing it to you now, not expecting you to tell me anything today, but understand that is happening, you have a conflict right now. And before the season starts, that needs a resolution. I don't mean a physical resolution, just a resolution. In there, and uh, we pay them a very competitive hourly rate, uh, rate there to, and the staff and whatever. Um, and I, you guys are going to be looking with the plumber piece and whatever this year and have a little tighter rein on all that.
Once, once I get through the end of February, I'm going to attack the marina accounting, the right system.
The accounting pieces, yes. So I put that on there as an awareness, be thinking about it, um, and um.
Yeah, I got a question, so uh, what you're saying is that in the man, in the policy, they're not allowed to accept.
Absolutely correct. It's a gratu, it's a gratuity.
Right.
And it, it always is when you're a government employee, is what do you expect from me for that gratuity? Now, I will tell you, I'm probably one of the biggest violators in the world, not down there, but when I go places, you hand people. Five bucks, ten bucks, whatever it might be, they handle your lunch. I'm not, no, 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 but I mean, I'm, I, I, I'm of the, and I'm sure they see me. The type of me probably a lot.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I think I need to have a, want to have a discussion with you, I think I have a way of approaching this that would be amicable for everybody.
Okay.
Right, right now, you're right.
Through accounting.
Conflict and what's said there and you're actually enabled it because you've been accounting for it, so.
You have been.
Yeah, so you're, the conflict is right, really, is right here, so.
Yes, it is.
We could, I think we can address that.
Okay, just wanted to get it on everybody's radar.
Comment in, Mary Jo.
I think so.
Okay.
I was just clarifying.
Hey, Nate, move on. Uh, moving on to number thirteen, uh, Jim, that's your, that's your cue for our budget amendments for our.
Yeah.
Current year.
The.
Objecting to March thirty-first.
There should be the most current one that I think that um. Was handed to you. What I did is uh, sat down, went through all of where we're at. If, and you, using the same worksheet that I had done and uh, extrapolated where I think we're going to be to see. Try to head off the, the overages before we even get to them. And hopefully this would be the one and only amendment we have to make for the rest of the year. I also sat down with Chief um, Fisher because uh, he's leaving. And one of the things that wasn't contemplated in your budget from last year was his payout for his, you know. Accumulated time and all that, so we incorporated that in here as well. Um, so what you'd have. Um, so what you have in front of you is the proposed. Budget amendment. Uh, byline item. For all the funds. Which we would, I think, have to pass next meeting.
Those are usually in the the consent agenda. Is where that would go.
And so you can see, like, the first section is the general fund. Um. Made the changes that need to be made it and and then actually moved that. The difference into the contingency.
Yep.
Um. The debit and the contingency actually means we're we're increasing it, not decreasing, we're not taking away, we're actually. Adding to it. Um. And the fire fund, same thing uh with his changes, um, some of the money that's being spent for like the durable fire equipment. Is coming out of their fund balances that they have carried forward for, because they've got savings for specifically for equipment that they carry over every year. Um. And the rest of the stuff is just kind of. Housekeeping. Any questions?
Well, I spent, I'm looking at it, and I, that was exactly where.
We talked. One, one thing's gonna change now that I have uh everything caught up.
Yes.
On your accounting system.
Real time.
Uh, you'll be getting a budget to actual report with the treasurer's report every month now, so you'll be able to see. What I'm talking about.
Yep. Much appreciated.
Nice.
Any questions, board? Okay, uh, and then, of course, there is the last number fourteen, uh, Jim, the Higgins Township Planning Commission, and you had verbs for the board.
Yeah, uh, just just give the key, give you an update, um. I'm I'm the new liaison for for your planning commission, so I'm now a voting member, um. I guess the first thing which. Occurred before I got voted in to be or or got sworn in, I attended uh their last meeting, which was mostly uh dedicated to. The short-term rental uh ordinance, which they've been drafting, and because. They had half their board gone, they didn't have a quorum, so we had a discussion, but we couldn't. Uh, come to a conclusion on uh, but you could see. That coming in March uh from them officially with their recommendations on. A final draft of that ordinance, which this board will have to then decide if they want to adopt it and or make changes to it. Or kick it back, however, you know, I wasn't here when it was originally assigned to them, but that's one of the main things that they've been. Uh, working on. The other thing is I attended uh. A week ago, uh, uh, conference up in um. Gaylord regarding Public Act two thirty three for the uh. Which not to be confused with special settlement, this is a new act that has to do with uh renewable energy ordinances and um. And it it really, you know, this township probably doesn't see that on the horizon, but you know, neither did Higgins Township, and Higgins Township's now dealing with potential solar farm. Uh, in its township, so uh I went with three other members of the planning commission and listened to, it was put on by Eagle and a. Uh, Michigan State and U of M and several other agencies, and basically it had, it talks about that the the. New Public Act two thirty three uh ordinance, which uh we've had brief discussions in here, um. There's currently two lawsuits opposing this, and there, uh, I think, Mary Jo, you shared a resolution that. Uh, I think was the RTA is putting out, um, now. That resolution doesn't really. It, all it does is supports. In in spirit, the the lawsuit that's currently going on, it really doesn't change your current ordinance, it doesn't really. Have any effect other than maybe a political clout for somebody that's out there fighting this. But basically, we have to make a decision in which that we all have to go to tell the plant commission on how we want to proceed. If if our board does not do anything, and somebody comes along and wants to put in a solar farm or wind farm or something on our township. If we have no order, well, thirty days to either draw one up. If uh. If if uh, if we don't do that, then. Uh, basically, under Public Act two thirty three, the uh developer could go to the Michigan Public Service Commission and just bypass. This township's board and just do whatever they have they want, and that's what the big issue is, is basically taking that. The abilities for the local government to um control that, this has already happened uh in prior years with the um. Like uh. Putting in the gravel pits, that 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 was one of the ones that I I had read about before.
Writing.
Where the state's coming in and just saying, well, we're gonna use that property, and local governments have nothing to say about, any property owners that live nearby. Their their property is being affected by that, not to mention their quality of life, so if. One of the other things the MTAs pushing out there is something called a CREEO, which is a uh compatible renewable energy ordinance. Um, if you pass, if you put that in, all that really does is streamline um the process for somebody to put in something like this. It's not, uh, it basically amulates to two thirty three uh. Public Act so that. Uh, your developer would just walk in and you you would probably do a ordinance like this if you were trying to promote. Renewable energy plants within your community, because you get to keep the fees that come in when on the application, if they. Don't have, you don't have an ordinance, the fee goes to the public service commission. And then they make the decision, and you may or may not get some of the fees that are generated from the revenues of the, whatever it is they're doing.
Does that give you involvement in the decision-making or just the fees?
You see. Well. It does give you involvement in this, in the decision-making, but what basically what you've done is emulated the. The, what the criteria that the public service commission would use, so you really are not. No. So the other two options, what's called a workable ordinance or a non-workable ordinance, which basically. A non-workable is when you've defaulted to it because you couldn't work something out, so that would be taking, let's say, the. Ordinances that's under Public Act two thirty three and maybe restricting height, maybe restricting uh distance from the road, maybe creating uh. Natural buffers, you know, all these extra things that uh usually a planning commission would do if somebody was building, let's say, these uh rental units that you had down the bottom of the hill. So, um. If what that does is does put the you in the driver's seat, the the developer would come in and have to negotiate with the township. On those aspects that you put in there, and so um. I've had brief discussions with Tom Barber, who is your uh chair of the planning commission, three of the commission people were there with me. I suspect this is gonna be a a topic, you, our board is gonna have to give them direction on. How you'd like to go forward, you know, my thought is we should probably start looking at what's called a workable plan. With those limitations, now, when I went into that meeting, they gave us two maps of Roscommon County with. Uh, potential uh solar, uh, you know, good for solar and good for wind. Uh, the third type of uh renewable energy is battery plants, there's absolutely no way as a member of this committee. I would ever let that happen in our township, when I saw what happens when those things catch on fire, you do not want that in our community. Uh, and I'm not even sure the, we're suitable for the other two items, we're a resort. Area, uh, our our money comes in for tourism, uh, but if we don't do something. Then. You could have what's happened with Higgins, where they're trying to decide. A- after the fact, so it comes in, so, you know, that's my recommendation, Tom's not so sure that the CREEO is not a bad idea, he's still, he wants more information. Um, but I think that there'll definitely be a discussion at our next meeting, but it's gonna come back, and this board's gonna have to decide. How much time you want us to put into this.
Nothing is not an option.
I I agree, nothing is not an option, uh, it's my 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 feeling, I, there's no way, after I heard what happens with the battery plants, you'd ever want one, I wouldn't want one in the county.
Oh, I hope it was a small battery fire into the the village that was miserable behind a house in a shed, I believe, not, I don't know, I mean, a couple, few years ago, but.
But you can't put them out.
You can't.
The technology, they got, there's no technology to put them out, you just gotta stand and watch them burn. So anyways, that's my report. You know, uh, our next meeting, I think, is March sometime, and uh.
So. Look, our next meeting is March, I mean, it's Tuesday.
Yeah.
Uh, scheduled, uh, we might have. A need for a special uh, as some of these positions need to be reviewed, we gotta get a couple of board members to interview for committee. Things we've got out there now, other than that. Our next bite at the apple becomes uh a work session in March, three meetings uh that are oriented annual meeting. Special meeting and budget meeting uh on the annual meeting night. So the the question becomes that I have, you know, on the timing piece. Is. I, do you? You all want to, you want to make a motion Tuesday night to move forward with. Uh, our liaison to.
Well, my my feeling.
Operationally, just let them do it and come back.
My feeling is is that.
What do you?
I don't think we need to make a motion next week, I think that. The planning commission needs to have a discussion. And and then come back with a, from our board a recommendation of what if if we need to. How to proceed, and then you decide, yeah, no, whatever. Uh, before they spend the time, uh, there are some great. Uh, ordinance is already written that we could uh plagiarize and then make changes to what we, that's our community.
I'm just concerned about time.
Well.
I mean, government burns really, really, really.
Yeah, I realize that, but the ID, I, you know, these these projects, if somebody came in today and wanted an application, you have that thirty day rule, but you could also. Delay it, uh, but even if they went to the public service commission, it's still a hundred twenty days, you know, before they even. And that can be extended another hundred twenty days.
Well, would there be any effect then who did it, uh, so. As as slept rock here, uh, somebody walks in tomorrow and wants a eight acre place or whatever there. And if we we had waited to do this until. Ninety days before the, oh, oh, we got one now, what's the look back on that with the public service commission or otherwise, what's?
You know, it's so new, it's hard to tell, uh, I, you know, some of these questions came up, but the thing is, Brian. It would be eight acres, if they wanted to do a solar farm.
It'd be bigger.
Yeah, it's good, even you'd need eight acres to put one, one windmill on, so.
I don't think we have that much.
I don't think so, I don't think it's, I don't think it's viable in our community, although that map with, you know, Roscommon, of course, you know, they had the power station, they were showing showing where. Where it could fit, but I. I, the likelihood is pretty slim in my, for Garrish, I think, some of the other townships around here, that that could, you know, get hammered, and the problem is. Is that these guys that are coming in to develop, they've been around the block, the township boards, most of them, they don't. You know. So it could be a, you know, you could, this thing that happened, almost happened in Gaylord, was politically. Motivated, it was, you know, this giving up the DNR land. And they went in and told them, that was the state came in and said. If you don't give us this land, give it, you tell, pick out where you're gonna give us, and if it wasn't for some of our state reps and senators getting involved with saying, nah, no way is this going down. In not Seaco County, it would have. Started moving that way, uh, so. Um, I definitely don't like the idea of somebody from Lansing telling me what's best for Garrish Township.
Read.
That part.
Read, one hundred percent. We know how well the state of Michigan plays with local issues here. Um, okay, we're on to uh the comment back to again. Mr. Janowski?
Could make it there.
Okay, so. With regards to what Lyon did, um. By by controlling the zoning on that. That treatment plant, I would like to see Garrish do the same, because we still don't know what. Anybody's gonna do, and I would like to see that blocked. You know, putting at Maplehurst and Burdell over there, don't allow the planning commission to rezone that, because what, what, if they make it a commercial M one. They're gonna, you know, you have to change it to allow it, so I'd like the board. To stop. That from ever happening, just like Lyon did. And that takes everything out of it, otherwise. This may continue on for the step. I mean, you're gonna, you need to start by eliminating. The sites. Right off the bat, and and if you all agree to not going forward to step, you should have no problem making an amendment. To not allow that to be rezoned. Okay, that being said, I'm gonna go to number ten, the raises. Okay, I've been watching your raises within this township since I've been here, even before I've been here, ten years. And, you know. I'm on social security, I got a two point five percent increase. That, you know, there, I can't argue it, I can't ask more, my health insurance went up fifteen percent, so I'm a, I'm losing. Bottom line, now the township, I have not yet heard you say anything about. Raising the premiums for, you know, the health insurance, and I know it's gonna go up, you know. Six to fifteen percent, that's, that's what's happening, so.
We made a large statement on that, perhaps, maybe people may not have understood it.
Yeah.
There is a Public Act one fifty two of twenty eleven, and the township has always uh since the beginning of.
You just shut that off. Oh.
It's unrealistic. Uh, anyways, uh, what that does is it puts us automatically in a very high deductible policy. And it doesn't put us into the uh what I call mandatory eighty twenty, eighty percent employer, twenty percent employee. The township wins every time, every time, by quite a percentage. Uh, we we budget and basically, you know, health insurance goes by experiment. And so we we try and budget. Uh, but we always win in that budget line, I will tell you, I've been responsible for sitting in that since Obama there. We gave up what I call the ethos to be real uh good thing. I'm sure you enjoy it when you were working.
Correct, yes.
And uh so, that being said, those expenses, if you will, uh, never come out. To what they would be, even if we would push eighty twenty, it's currently a bill right now, if you're following it all in the state of Michigan. You rescind the eighty twenty, because quite simply put, it doesn't, eighty doesn't even come close to paying, and it winds up more than twenty cents on the end. Uh, other cutbacks and that, so we're watching that very carefully, we've always been good students of benefit money, there's always. That's always the township's advantage, the employees have been fabulous, we sit down every year with the with the insurance committee and look through all of them, we've changed. Companies to be more favorable uh for the township, and this last one we did, we leave over and look for us or VCI. In priority, and it was not a good experience, and. People got caught underfoot on some of that, quite simply put. They're not denying pre-existing conditions, but they're denying the medication that you need for free.
Yeah.
So like, so there is a loophole, you know, just on that side.
Right.
And go ahead on your.
Okay, yeah, no. Yeah, I agree, um, but the four percent across the board, again, I got two point five percent, okay, and then last year. You know, any company or business, they generally, and I know you're not, but they generally. Base their raises on performance, you know, they have performance reviews and this and that, so you got people coming in that have been here for one month. And you're giving them a four percent raise. It, you know, you don't even know what they do, is he, is is the treasurer doing a better job than our previous? Absolutely, we went from an abacus to a calculator and software, so, I mean, he's doing his job, so he's worth every penny of his current. Salary, but to just jump right in in one month and give yourself a four percent. That's high, and I, again, I'm getting two point five percent, that's all I get, okay? The clerk, seven percent last year. Okay, she single-handedly almost destroyed a whole primary election, that is. Not a very good performance mark on her record book. Okay, I I'm the one who called. Okay, I, I'm the one who called. The tax committee and. I called everybody else to report that. That, that was being hidden. I mean, for her to give the wrong direction on the primary, that was horrendous. I mean, it was awful and I brought that up. So, you know, I'm watching everybody here. I mean, you know, the clerk, fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. Treasurer, forty-eight thousand, six hundred. Supervisor, you only get forty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. I mean, you know, and now you're gonna give a four percent on that. I mean. It, it just, you know, you could say, you know, the, the treasurer is gonna comment after I leave here and say, well, he saved. You know, the township this much money because it was eighteen thousand and blah, blah, blah. You know, kudos to him. I, I, you know, he's doing a great job. From what we had. I mean, you should have fired, Udi should have fired that guy.
Can't fire an elected official.
Then, then the township. Yeah, okay, well, the township.
Fire an elected official, only the governor may take them out.
Yeah.
Public may take.
Okay, well, fine.
That is it.
You can't, you can't get them.
Our rules, we gotta follow.
Okay, okay. So, so I can't, if I disagree. And, you know, ten thousand other people disagree with one of these trustees, we can't remove them from the board?
You.
Okay, that's what I meant. My miss, my misinterpretation. I didn't, I guess I shouldn't have said fired. But we should have recalled him.
Appointed official. You are, you get the benefits of being an elected official and you cannot be removed.
Right. And now when you come to the, when, when this comes up, in March. Uh, for the raises, you know, you guys are gonna leave the room. Family and friends are gonna fill this to standing room only and every family and friends are gonna vote yes. Cause you guys can't vote your own raises.
Yeah, we'll be leaving the room. We just.
Okay, okay, yeah. But.
And, and, and you, you're correct. Garrish Township is a home rule township that chooses to have an annual meeting.
Right.
Because at that annual meeting, individual board. Uh, salaries get voted on individually.
Right.
Now, by the way. If you wanna talk about options, the option could be if we really were trying to hoodwink the public. The option would be to do one resolution, which does all of them together. We haven't done that.
Right.
It's never been done in my forty-two years here. And it is, uh, then you're right, it is. And when you talk about friends, I only have one in my life. It's my wife. So don't count on me as a multiple.
Well, I'm telling you, right now.
At the end of the day, yes, sir. If we had this today, it is on the, it, it is what, what I call on the results of the room.
Right.
And that is, that, that is what's given to us by the statute.
I know.
And you know, research, this is what's been one of my, my biggest issues since I took office.
Right.
I wish the Michigan Township Association and their legislature, legislative pieces and whatever. Would look at the forty-one dot seven, whatever law that it is a statute. It's over a hundred years old and hasn't been. It hasn't received the growth, I think, that it needs for people like yourself. Who want to be involved in government and want to see certain safeguards. We have to follow those rules. And I'm not saying they're fair, but it is what it is. Nobody here locally is trying to hoodwink anybody.
No.
Now, I will, the one thing I'm gonna say about raises. Only thing I'm gonna say about it. You heard me when I got here in April. I recognize your face several months.
Yeah.
That look, no, we're not gonna, we're not spending that money because we don't know what money we have.
Right.
And so now we have done all of our due diligence and we do have where we are. Our governmental employees, simply because they're governmental employees. Don't get a different view of, you know, a job well done. We, nobody gets turkeys around here. You probably did as a company. If you worked for a private company, you get, you get bonuses, you get all of those things. I know what I'm talking about. I got, I got a corporate son and I can tell you what they get and what government does not. So at the end of the day, I witnessed the same thing you did over the last couple of years. My predecessor chose to say, look. How do we, how do we attract?
The best.
I know. That are better. If you perceive them to be bad. How do you do that? So, so what was done is he tried at that point. It was successful, by the way, on. Seven percent for the clerk's office, if you will. I don't know, I can't remember what the treasurer was, but.
I know.
At the, at the end of the day. It's about the position. It's not about Brian. It's not about Jim Anderson, Jim Ossling or any, or Michelle, okay? It's a, it, it's a, it's a funding of a position. I, I gotta tell you.
Yeah.
Uh, I took an appointment. In April twenty-third, nobody applied for this job. I think I know why.
Oh, yeah.
I've been around for forty-two years. I knew there were some issues here, but and, and, and listen. I have typified this for me as a labor of love. Not, not about money. That's for darn sure.
It's not.
So for me. I mean, you all, whoever is it, don't want to have the board have raises. You can do the same thing.
It's not, I don't want.
As far as go get the room, you're not gonna offend me. I could, I, I'm gonna be honest with you. Don't give me four percent. I, that's fine. I'm here for a labor of love.
You're the only one.
I'm here for it.
You're the only one that has proved to me that it's shown improvement in this township. The, these guys are, are next. I mean, you're showing me that you really care. I mean, the previous boards. Boy, oh, boy, I, I got nothing to say. I mean, we, I firmly believe we do not have a yes board. In place right now, based on what I hear from him and him. There, there are some no, there's some. Things happening that, that everybody's not just saying, yes, 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 yes. And you. You're the best supervisor out of any township I've ever lived in. You care about this township. Now, I give you, I'm not give you the four, give you five. Cut them back to two and a half until they prove themselves.
That is the public's decision.
Yeah, that's my, that's my.
Thing we're required to do is put something out.
Yeah.
So that the public can look and you can then, that is your opportunity to have those votes.
Right, I disagree with it, so.
And, and what, what. I, listen, I disagree with a lot of the government does. It takes ninety days to buy a chair. Come on.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, again, I just wish somebody would, would fix those statues, but.
Well.
So please don't think it, I mean, it's totally adversarial. I'm just trying to tell you that, my goodness.
You're one of the few people, I, you know, I come in, I talk with you often.
I'm.
And every time I leave a meeting, I say I'm never coming back. But then when I see an agenda like this. Here I am again, you know.
Not a problem.
I mean, so.
That is a citizen's right and it's in our democracy and I always stand.
It's been a long four hours.
Yes, it has. Imagine us who have, uh, been, been in since seven in the morning. All right, any other public comment? Thank you, Mr. Janowski. Uh, Jim? Uh, you know, I keep doing this.
All good.
Mary Jo.
Lot of paper, yep.
Michelle. Did I worry you out?
And deadline for some things we have posted out online.
Yes, we are. February ninth, I think is the, the date which falls in between, obviously.
Proceed with you, not at time, but um, we will be able to go through those after.
Who will assist um? Clerk squires in an interview of the various people. On the various things that could then bring something to the board. That's what I said, we're probably likely gonna have to have a special meeting. You know, a couple of weeks down the road, just to get these people seated properly uh and reviewed. But that, those people that are gonna do interviewing of those people need to be, need to have some time, obviously. The expiration date was February ninth on most of these and it's February whatever fifth today.
What did you get done in advance? Is it a? Couple of board members or is it somebody from the committee involved too or?
It's through the past, so they spend, yeah, you're good enough. I don't think they have to be lengthy.
No, 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 no. I just, they're just need, you need to meet with these people. Gosh, they were good enough.
You know, if it's during the office hours and.
Yeah.
I can help with that.
Can you?
I mean, I can, I can. Go ahead, just pick some folks, you know, I, I can. Be, if you need be, I'd be glad to.
So I'm hearing the two gyms now?
And Brian, if you want.
No, that makes it a board meeting.
No.
No, whoop.
It's just one or the other.
So you'd be an alternate in the event it needed to. Jim and Jim? Okay, uh, Jim, when you and I meet to look at the health or the, uh, put out the Health of Higgins Lake piece, we'll devise a little timeline there.
Right.
All right, very good. Anybody else? Comments, questions, criticisms? Very good. I wanna thank everybody for their attention. And boy, someday I'd like to get these done to about an hour and a half, but nonetheless, I hope you all enjoy the, the conversation and.
So move. Second.